Well, the witches stare with their limbs akimbo. Silhouettes and statues up in the window call me to call me with a crooked crescendo, but I don't. Devotees dance among the and the mimes on the promenade into a tabernacle on the lawn, but I don't follow because she's mine. She's mine. She's mine. All mine. Yeah, she's mine. Yes, mine. Mine. Mm-hmm. Midnight moon across the people's bargain off, let her find like a spinning spark upon to a porch in the dark as she was waiting right there for me. And she knows that my hands are empty as I go past. The mothers are empty and I don't have to fumble in the door for my keys. I believe she's mine, yes. She's mine. She's mine. Yeah.
Okay, please take your seats. Welcome to the seven o'clock session of the June 12th City Council meeting. Guess our city attorney report?
There's nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance given by Councilwoman Gardner. How about that? Since she laughed first. And we'll have an inv- please stay standing for the invocation by Pastor John Embry of the Newport Harbor Lutheran Church. Thank you.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a moment for prayer, please. We gather from home and school and work, some in celebration, some in frustration. We celebrate youth and cultures, gifts and givers. We gather, discuss, debate, decide issues that affect the lives of people in our community and the precious resources of Newport Beach. Open our hearts and minds that our celebrations are uplifting, our deliberations open and gracious, and grant special wisdom on these leaders tonight. Gracious God, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please take your seats. I don't know, I might just flag this celebration center. Okay, we have several or a number of presentations. We'll be starting first with the presentation of the Okazaki exchange students. And I see the president of the Sister Cities Association, sorry. Thank you, Homer. A little senior moment there.
Good evening.
Making your way up. Hi, Sherry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have with us six of the students that have been selected to go to Okazaki starting on July 1st and returning on July 11th, and the two chaperones. And each of them would like to say a little bit about themselves.
Okay.
So we'll start with Ashton.
My name is Ashton McGinnis, and I go to Corona Del Mar High School. I enjoy playing the guitar and playing basketball. I think that I'll learn about Japanese culture and their way of life. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm really excited to be going to Okazaki.
Thank you.
My name is Colin Lewis. I am in the eighth grade at Ensign Intermediate School. I am 15 years old, and I am very excited to go to Japan because I love learning about different cultures and traveling, and I want to thank you all very much for choosing me for this great opportunity.
Thank you. I don't know that we chose him, but somebody chose you.
My name is Nick Tredaway, and I go to Corona Del Mar Middle School. My hobbies are playing guitar and water polo. Very excited to go to Japan to learn about their culture, and I think I will learn how the Japanese people live their day-to-day culture, their day-to-day lives, and the similarities and differences between our lives. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I'm very excited to go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Morgan McVeigh, and I'm 13 years old. I currently attend Ensign Intermediate Junior High School. I am so excited to go to Japan and learn about the Japanese culture. I've always had a curiosity about different cultures, especially in Japan. I hope to learn their language, traditions, cultures, and other ways of life while I'm there. By the end of the trip, I want to have learned all about the life of a Japanese family. Thank you so much for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I will do my best to represent Newport Beach proudly.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Healy Schrader. I attend Ensign Intermediate School. I want to go to Japan because I want to learn more about their culture, and I've always been interested in Japanese art, and I love sushi. While in Japan, I expect to expand my vocabulary. Thank you so much for this wonder opportunity. Konnichiwa.
Konnichiwa.
Hi, my name is Alex Morton, and I am 14 years old. I attend Ensign Intermediate School. I expect that I will learn a lot about how people interact in another country like Japan, and how this country differs from the United States of America. In conclusion, I would like to thank you all for this unprecedented opportunity.
Thank you. No, you don't go to Ensign.
No, I don't go to Ensign. What gave it away? Hi, my name is Missy Smith. I'm currently an eighth-grade English teacher at Costa Mesa High School. I would first like to express what a great honor and privilege it is to be selected as a chaperone for this trip. I am extremely excited to travel to Japan and to learn, obviously, more about their cultures than everyone else, and to experience the Japanese culture in a profound manner, one that the average traveler would not have experienced without this trip. Thank you for this opportunity, and that's it.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Justin Myers. I'm the male chaperone going on the trip, and it's really great to have this opportunity after 10 years ago, being myself one of the students who have gone there. And I know what an exciting trip this is for them, and how much it will mold their lives to being able to experience other cultures of the world, and I look forward to representing Newport again.
Well, is that all the presentations? Okay, well, I'd just like to say thank you for representing us in Japan. Councilman Webb and I had the honor of visiting the city of Okazaki about, was it about six weeks ago now? Six weeks ago on a Sister Cities trip, and I know I had a great time. The people there are very gracious. They love Americans over there, which is hard to find sometimes in other parts of the world, but, and so I think you'll be well taken care of, and please say hello to all the folks over there for me. Thank you.
And I was even able to visit one of the shopping centers and find a Tower Records store if you're interested in that.
Thank you for coming. Okay, next up, we have our youth council presentation. I see Zan out in the audience.
Give her a formal introduction.
Formal, okay, formal introduction.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, it is my pleasure to announce Zan Margolis. One of the pleasures I get to do in my job is work with the youth council, which is a joy to do, and Zan has been great to work with for the past three years, and she's off to NYU in September, and she's going to give our annual report to the council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Sean's been recently promoted, I believe, as well. Are you going to continue with youth council, or?
I'll still be involved.
No, I think you got a department promotion. We call getting married a promotion, Homer. I call it many things without a promotion.
I understood that because my wife was in the audience.
I know, I see your wife out in the audience, Homer. Hi, Zan.
Hello, good evening, and thank you for having the youth council here and giving us the opportunity to share what we do each year. So the youth council is committed to representing the voice and viewpoint of teens while striving to benefit the quality of life in Newport Beach by creating experiences that connect teens to the community. The responsibilities and the purpose of the youth council are relatively broad. We first act in an advisory capacity. We like to supervise what the city does and make it as beneficial to the youth as we possibly can while trying to give back by giving you guys suggestions from the viewpoint of your younger citizens. We try to provide a direct line of communication, especially through the high schools that are in the city of Newport Beach. We have been very involved in organizing several events that take place over the course of the year. The youth council tries to put as much into it as we possibly can, whether that's manpower, creative ideas, or a new approach to getting our citizens involved. And we like to promote youth involvement and interest in community affairs. I personally believe that it's very important for the youth to understand how their government works, especially when they reach the age of 18 and they have the right to vote. I think it's essential knowledge that you understand how your country works, all the way down to the municipal level, so this is one opportunity for us to spread that knowledge. So what does the youth council do? We have a variety of activities each year that include the Easter egg hunt, our Winter Wonderland, fundraising activities, Challenge Day. We're blessed with many guest speakers over the course of the year, and City Government Day is probably what we're most proud of. The Easter egg hunt this year was at Bonita Creek Park, and we invite families, children, citizens of Newport Beach and beyond to join us for a day. We have activities, games, food, and just try to get everybody involved in the spirit of spring. I know that I was working at the craft table this year, and it was pretty cute. Kids were making bunny ears and bunny masks. We also have the Winter Wonderland, which also takes place at Bonita Creek Park. Usually Santa Claus comes and visits. Again, the youth council is in charge of the snack bar. We have crafts, activities, and again, it's just a place for hundreds of families to come together and be with other citizens of the area. This year, we had one guest speaker that was particularly fun. We had somebody from the Newport Beach Police Department bring one of the canine units over, and this dog walked around the fire conference room, actually, I'm not sure if you're allowed to know that, and we learned quite a bit about what goes on in that department of our police force. So again, it's also an opportunity to share career ideas and, you know, expose the youth of the city to what's happening behind the scenes. Our City Government Day is, I think, the icing on the cake. It took this year, took place this year on February 15th. We have students from Corona Del Mar High School, Newport Beach High School, I believe Mater Day, and Sage Hill were also represented, and essentially, we do a mock council meeting where everybody, all the students have been assigned to a certain role in government. For example, we have a mayor, we have council members, and then the various departments of city government as well. I was part of the Fire and Marine Department, so I spent the morning preparing for the council meeting by going to the Marine and Fire Headquarters. This, I think that's a particularly fun department because you get to see the fire truck and take the speedboat out, and that's how it works for every department of government. So you're exposing youth from across the high schools to what happens in their city government. You're bringing them together for a day. It's a place to exchange ideas, and we end it by having a very fun process debating issues that the city is actually debating at the same time. And again, it's a little interesting to see where the youth perspective leads the debates. Challenge Day this year took place on Saturday, May 19th. It's a pretty neat day because it really fosters a healthy human relations within the city. We targeted violence, racism, and social oppression, teasing and stereotyping, among other things, and we make goals for character building, self-esteem, conflict management, and essentially, everybody walks out of the room feeling much more like themselves and much closer to everybody around them. We have some future goals, though, even though some of the seniors obviously won't be coming back. It's going to be a great group next year, we're always confident. We'd like to enhance participation with an emphasis on individual commitment. We'd also like to increase member diversity and school representation. We'd like to venture beyond traditional goals and projects to expand the year's agenda and continue to be a positively recognized force within the community, working for its benefit. We'd like to take the time to thank Mayor Steve Rozansky. He came to a few of our meetings and has always made sure that his face is seen among the youth council, and his presence is always appreciated. And I'd like to invite the youth council up here for a moment, just so that we can give them a round of applause and take a picture. Come on.
Need a really wide-angle lens.
And I also just wanted to thank Sean and Raquel for everything they've done this year to advise the council. If we could just give them a round of applause, they do a lot of work.
Thank you, Zan, for heading up the youth council presentation and being, I guess, the president of the youth council this year. I did enjoy attending those meetings with the younger residents of our community. I learned a lot there. I wish I had been able to get to more. It seems like the demands of being mayor took a lot of my time, and unfortunately, there were conflicts. But I would say that the Youth and Government Day that we had and the mock city council meeting was the highlight of the program, especially for me, and it's amazing how quickly kids can pick up on the issues and ask intelligent and probing questions. So I appreciate being part of the program, and I look forward to interacting with the next crop next year. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Curry.
Well, I'd just like to congratulate the youth council and let you know that 30-some years ago, I was a member of the Los Angeles County Youth Commission, and that led to being on the state youth commission, and everything that I've done really since then has sort of led from that. So I encourage you to stay involved in government. It's been, it's been a great experience for me, and I know it has been for you, too, and I congratulate you. Thank you.
Next up, we have the Toshiba Classic, $10 million, and 10-year milestone.
Good evening. We're here to celebrate a community's success with you and make a presentation to the, to the council. I'm Hank Adler. I'm the outgoing and retiring chairman of the Toshiba Classic. This is Ira Garbit, who's the incoming chairman. Based on our protocolity to change chairman, you'll be looking at Ira for the next 18 years. As you said, the Toshiba Classic in the last 10, 10 years has made about $10,100,000 for Hoag Hospital and other various charities in the area. Beyond that, it's become a marker in the community. We've had roughly 5,000 Newport Beach citizens participate as volunteers in the event. It's a near entirely volunteer event, and it's just been great for the community, great worldwide exposure with the Golf Channel now and worldwide for both Hoag Hospital and Newport Beach. We're told that we put $10 to $20 million in the coffers of local business. I take that with a little grain of salt, but the Toshiba comes with about 3,000 hotel rooms and all the food and stuff that goes with that. I think it's good for Newport Beach. But we're really here to just thank the city council and the members of the community for their volunteer support, and to thank Homer and his team specifically for all they have put up with us for the last 10 years. Lots of events, lots of police work, a department well-run, and his efforts very much appreciated. So Ira's going to make a short presentation.
I just have a few comments to make. First off, to put the job that Hank has done into perspective, over the last 10 years, the Toshiba Classic has averaged $1 million for charity. The average Champions Tour event raises $250,000 for charity. So the value added for Hank over the last 10 years, and he goes back to the Taco Bell Classic back in the 1982. He's been volunteering for Hoag Hospital for an awful long time, and he's done just a fantastic job with the Toshiba Classic. He's also the person responsible for bringing the only PGA Tour event in Orange County to the great city of Newport Beach. The environment in Newport Beach makes it easy for us to attract a great player field to the event. They love playing at the Newport Beach Country Club, and their wives love coming here and spending money in restaurants and hotels and shopping centers. There's a joke on the Champions Tour that you have to finish in the top 10 on the money list to break even at Newport. The 10th place money is $40,000, so you can imagine how much money is being spent while the Toshiba Classic is in town. The most important result, though, is what we're doing for charity. $10 million. I'm a, I'm a five-year member of the Hoag Hospital Foundation Board, and I can tell you that the money that the Toshiba has raised has meant a great deal to the hospital. We have a saying in the foundation board, "When it's your turn, you want the very best." And my turn came six and a half years ago when I had open-heart surgery at Hoag Hospital. It was a real blessing for me to have a facility like Hoag and a world-renowned heart surgeon like Dr. Aidan Rainey right here in my community. We'd like to thank you for all of the hard work that you do to make Newport Beach such a unique and beautiful city, to commemorate the work of the Toshiba Classic over the last 10 years, and hopefully, from my perspective, going forward, I'll have some success. Hank has just done an absolutely phenomenal job over the last 10 years for the Toshiba Classic. We have a poster that is $10 million in 10 years, and it's signed by our champion this year, Jay Haas, so we'd like to present that to you.
Our last presentation is going to be a happy one. I'm sorry? Well, this is a really happy one. Happy one for Evelyn, I meant. Evelyn, why don't you come up? We have a proclamation for Citizen of the Year Honoree Evelyn Hart. While Evelyn's making up here, she's a, there we go. Evelyn's a former councilwoman and mayor, I believe, about 16 years on the council, I think I read somewhere. It's a long time, before term limits, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, well, I have a proclamation. Let me grab it. I'm going to read. There you go. Okay, "Whereas the Newport Beach Citizen of the Year Award is presented to that individual who best represents the qualities each of us admire and respect among our friends, neighbors, and associates, and whereas it is not given for outstanding single effort as much as for long-term continuing commitment to the community. And whereas it is for the one who says Newport Beach is my home and my life, and its future and mine are in the same, are in the same, and whatever I can do to make it better, I will do. And whereas a Newport Beach native since 1952, Evelyn has offered her time, energy, and enthusiasm to the following groups benefiting youth, education, and senior citizens: the Newport Beach Library Literacy Program, the YMCA, Youth Employment Services, Someone Cares Soup Kitchen, Air Fair, and Friends of Oasis. And whereas Evelyn has been a Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commissioner," that's where I started out, "Chairman of the Local Agency Formation Commission, Board Member of the Santa Ana Regional Quality, or Water Quality Control Board, President of the Orange County League of California Cities, and Member of the State of California Geographic Information Task Force," you're going to have to tell me what that is afterwards, "and whereas she has served on the Newport Beach City Council for 16 years and was mayor of Newport Beach, now therefore I, Stephen Rozansky, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, declare Thursday, June 14th, 2007, as a day in which the city of Newport Beach and the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce will honor Evelyn Hart as a 2007 Newport Beach Citizen of the Year." Congratulations. We're going to be having a big party for Evelyn on Thursday. Hundreds of people coming to honor her and her achievement. Do you want to say a few words, Evelyn?
Well, if I just may, I'm very fortunate this evening with Karen and Jeff here from the Chamber of Commerce, who came down this evening with me, and of course, they're working very hard on that Thursday night, so, hi. Thank you for that really nice proclamation, city council. I appreciate it so much. I find myself kind of thinking, you know, I'm maybe not as good as I used to be, but I probably never was, so there you go on that one, huh? I am appreciative of the, of the proclamation. That's very nice. You know, I gave a few, but I never received one before, and this is very special. Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
I'll just add that Karen and I just wanted to add our special congratulations to Evelyn. This is a very prestigious award and very symbolic of a lot of the work and effort that many people put into bettering the city of Newport Beach, and we're just thrilled for her. And do want to invite everybody to come and join us. That event on Thursday is open to the public, so if anyone would like to attend, just go to NewportBeach.com, and there's all details there, and come join us. So congratulations and thanks to the city council, and of course, Mayor Rozansky for the proclamation.
Thank you, and I'm going to come down and present it to you, Evelyn, and hopefully we can get a picture together.
Well, Evelyn, I, it's been, Evelyn, it's been a real pleasure for me to have him. I think we first met and started working together in about 1973, or something like that, in the Bike Trails Committee, and you have really put in a lot of effort over the years in all the various different things you've done for the city, and thank you very much for your time and effort and service to this community.
Thank you, darling. Okay. Ooh, that looks nice.
Notice to the public, the city provides a sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report. placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, let's start with Councilman Hen tonight. Any items to pull?
I do have two announcements. They're actually, as it turns out, related to previous presentations this evening. The first is to say once again kudos and thanks to the sponsors and organizers of the Hoag Regatta. Seems like it's Hoag Night tonight. The regatta was very successful. Those same boats probably will be racing in the trans pack here in another month or so. But First Team Real Estate was really stepped up to the plate again as a principal sponsor of the race, and of course, Hoag put a lot of effort into the organizing. And special thanks to Jim Madden for serving as the chairman this year and organizing the race. This race this year actually will result in a net contribution to the Hoag Cardiovascular Institute of approximately four-hundred-thousand dollars, up substantially from the last race held just two years ago. So it's a good night for Hoag. The second thing is, I am very thankful that I was able to host a youth government day of my own here on Monday morning. We had the student council from Kaiser Elementary in Newport Mesa come into the council chambers. So happens that my daughter Emily is the student advisor... is the teacher advisor to the students for the student council, and we were able to hold a mock council meeting. We... The kids debated such weighty issues as whether to have alternating grades at recess and how to calculate the award for the Wacky Wednesday contest. But the debate was spirited and serious, and actually, it was a very heartening thing to participate in. Thanks to Homer Bloudow for coming and providing some conversation and discussion with the kids. And so I really felt good about it. It was a great opportunity and makes me feel good about the future of America that we're going to be handing off. Thank you.
Thank you, my, Councilman Curry.
Mr. Mayor, two items. First of all, I was able to attend the Government Finance Officers Association Conference in Anaheim, which is going on right now with eight thousand government finance officials from across the country, and I wanted to use this opportunity to point out that Newport Beach and Dennis Daner have once again won the GFLOA Award of Excellence for the quality of our financial report. Dennis tells me that this is the sixteenth consecutive year since he's been here that Newport Beach has won this prestigious award, so I just want to recognize his efforts and accomplishments in that regard. The second item is that later today, we will reconsider the award of a trash franchise. This reconsideration is based in part upon information that came over the Transamin Anonymous envelope detailing alleged violations by one of the firms, which was followed by brown envelopes detailing violations and other malfeasance by some of the other providers. And while it would appear that perhaps the most efficient means of finding out about our trash franchisees is simply to ask their competitors, it seems to me that we should have a more systematic way. So I would like the city attorney to prepare and bring back for consideration an ordinance that would require on a quarterly basis the reporting of all city franchise holders, any vehicle code citations, safety-related citations, liquidated damage claims, or terminations of contracts for clause, or other issues as may be deemed appropriate, as part of a quarterly report for those within the five-county Southern California area. Some of our franchisees are international firms. We don't need to know about what happens in Calgary, but we do need to know about what happens in Southern California. We do need to know it from them, and we do need to know it systematically for all of them as opposed to these anonymous misses. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Solich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June third, we had the Balboa Island Parade, and it was better than ever. It was the biggest parade that we've had since we started the parade, and Mayor Rosansky was the grand marshal and did a good job. And most of the council members were there, and a lot of city staff and department heads, and just a lot of great entrants into the parade. It just seems to get better and better every year. And I'd like to thank all the volunteers on Balboa Island that put in so much hard work and effort to really making this an event that really... It really highlights and shows the community spirit we have here in Newport Beach. It was just really a lot of fun for everyone.
Thank you. Councilman Webb.
Several items. On May twenty-ninth and thirtieth, I attended at Newport Harbor High School every fifteen minutes. This is something that is put on by our police department for the juniors and seniors, and it switches every other year between Newport Harbor and Coron del Mar. They put on a... They have a staged accident in which they have a vehicle that is just... Two vehicles that are placed as though they have just run into each other. It's a drunk-driving event in which students are role-modeling, and the fire department comes in, lights and sirens with the police department, and you go through the whole procedure. It's... Then the next day, an assembly is held for that same group of people in which the students hear from the parents of the deceased accident members. It's an extremely moving event, and I feel that it's a very good program. Our police and fire departments did a wonderful job, attended both days, and it brought a tear to my eye. I think it's something that hopefully it helped in reducing the number of alcohol-related accidents amongst our high school students. Memorial Day, our American Legion post put on a very good event at Pacific View Memorial honoring our veterans, and I attended that also, and it was very well-done, and thank you for that, the American Legion. On Sunday, Reverend George Crisp of the Christ Church by the Sea is retiring and had his going-away party there. Reverend Crisp has volunteered over fourteen times to provide the invocation to us and was obviously the minister that provided the first nonsens... legal, non-sectarian invocation, if I remember correctly, and so I'd like to wish him lots of good luck. And lastly, for city council members, in my walking around town, I come across a lot of interesting things, and the most recent walk, I happened to go by Park Newport Apartments, and in there, it's... They have an interesting way of making their parking structures look really nice. There's a lot of landscaping and grass and trees that are placed on top of their structures to make it look pretty. So I just wanted to... The council gets an opportunity and would like to see what it would look like to have a building with grass and landscaping on top of it. You might go in there and take a look. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diggle.
Yes, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Evelyn Hart for her many years of community service and commitment. I went on a tour of the Back Bay Science Center with the mayor and supervisor Morlock and Councilman Webb, and the facility is nearing completion, and one of the things that I wanted to recognize is the work of the many volunteers involved with putting a facility like this together and operating it. And we have the Back Bay Naturalist, where people put thousands of hours into it. You know, someone's developing a field guide. We have Department of Fish and Game, where you can go and be a volunteer ranger. We also have individuals develop... involved in developing the curriculum. And it's interesting because already today, I heard many other great examples of volunteerism, you know, the golf tournament, the parade, and the police department, which utilizes a lot of volunteers, and certainly, volunteerism is something very strong in our community. And for those that are volunteers, it's not work, it's helping improve the community. So I just wanted to recognize their efforts in conjunction with our Science Center.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gardner.
My voice is really good tonight. The Five K in Coron del Mar went off very successfully this year. We had more than two hundred additional racers than we had last year. I was there at the beginning to watch Mayor Rosansky start the race with his air horn. He didn't get... They wouldn't trust him with a gun, so I gave him a horn. It was great to see because there are... In these races, you know, you have the elite racers who, by the time I walked over the finish line, they were there, it seemed like. And then you have everybody else that just comes with every other kind of speed and shape, and they're just happy to be out there. They don't care if they're setting a record or anything. But I think best of all was that after the race, I went home. I only live a couple of blocks away from the course, and I came back. It was like it had never happened. Our staff had done a wonderful job of cleaning up and getting everything out, and this town was right back to where it was normally, so good job on everybody's part.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gardner. They already talked about a couple of things I attended. Last thing I just want to mention is, yesterday, I did get to attend the character award ceremony over at Ensign School. They handed out awards for both the seventh and eighth graders there. I think each class had twenty-five honorable mentions. Over three hundred and fifty students in each... in the school were mentioned by one teacher or another for a character award, but I guess it's an accumulation. In any event, there were six recipients of the award. It was a very nice ceremony and something that we might think about doing at all of our schools in our school system. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our consent calendar.
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items one through twenty-four, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, we'll start with Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, I have a change to the minutes, and I would like item sixteen.
Okay. Do you want to tell us what the change to the minutes was?
The change is on page fifty-eight. At the very bottom of the page, it says that "I felt the city should be creative and suggested there might be an opportunity for a public park at this location." I've been saying that for years. Actually, I said "public art," A-R-T.
That's page one fifty-nine.
I'm sorry. Page one fifty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gardner. Councilwoman Diggle.
None, thank you.
Councilwoman Webb. Councilman Hen.
None.
Councilman Curry. Councilman Solich.
I have none.
Okay, I have... Well, I'd like to pull item number three, I guess, because we talked about that earlier. I think the Beeks are here. Beek family is here, and we'll talk about that. And then also, I'd like to pull item number nine. Just want a little clarification made to that, and... And that... And the only thing I'd like to mention is item number seventeen. The council's going to enter an agreement with the county RDA for Santa Ana Heights. They're finally going to give us an extra five and a half million dollars for our fire station that we kind of built on spec there mostly, and so we were sweating a little bit, but county has finally come through with the dough, and so we'll be back in the black as far as our budget for that fire station. And with that, does the staff have any items to pull?
We have none.
Okay. Anybody from the public have an item on the consent calendar that they'd like to pull?
Can anyone pull eleven?
Come on up, Doris. That's a Newport Shore Street end improvement?
No. Item number nineteen. Does the council want to pull that one?
Nineteen, no.
This staff recommendation is that it be rebid. Are you sure you want to pull it?
Yeah, because I have a question about the document that I wrote. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent calendar items one through twenty-four with the exceptions of three, nine, sixteen, nineteen.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll address item number three on the consent calendar first. This has to do with... Well, who's in giving the staff report?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is an item which does two things. It introduces an ordinance for its first reading that would grant a franchise to the Balboa Island Ferry. It's actually a continuation of an existing franchise. That would need to be heard once and then heard again two weeks from now. The second thing it was intended to do was to authorize the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Balboa Island Ferry. And as you have noted, Mr. Mayor, at the previous meeting, there was some discussion about potentially having the council finance committee take a look at this a little bit more closely and then bring it back to you, with the issue being both the term, a minimum floor for the rent, a consumer price index, and then the percentage of gross.
Yeah, and I've spoken with the Beek family, and they're, I believe, in agreement. If not, please come forward and say you're not, but I believe they're in agreement to have at least... We're going to... I'm going to make a motion anyway to approve item A here, but that will continue item B to our next meeting, or I don't know how soon the finance committee can hear it, but just to give it a little bit more time for further discussion and allow the... For some more interaction with the owners of the Balboa Island Ferry. So that'll be my motion.
So your motion is to introduce the ordinance granting the franchise, and then two is to continue the lease authorization.
Yeah, at least until our next meeting.
Second.
Any other comment on that, public?
I just wanted to point out that this is an outstanding example of a private operator providing public transportation, and we're lucky we have you.
For a long, long time. Yes, and we appreciate that. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, that moves us to... What's the next one that was pulled? Sixteen?
Nine.
Or nine? Sorry. Oh, yes, I pulled item number nine. My only addition to this is I'd like to just limit that restricted parking for not more than... A period of not more than one year. Just don't want it to be an open-ended kind of a thing like we saw up in Newport Coast, probably not of a similar magnitude, but it does restrict parking on the street. So with that, I'll make a motion to adopt the staff's recommendation for a period of up to one year.
Mr. Mayor, would that be one year after construction starts, which I think is supposed to be in July?
All right, well, is it going to take more than a year to, you think, to build whatever they're going to build there?
Well, you know, there's probably going to be some demolition there. It's close to the...
Eighteen months?
No, I think they're figuring...
Well, they can always come back and ask us to extend it, so I'm sure we'll be happy to do that, but, you know, if it's open-ended, it'll take forever, and just assume that they move it along. Okay? So I'll just leave it at a year for right now. So I have a motion, a second. Do I have any comment from the public? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number sixteen. Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, we're replacing our monuments, and we have omitted one. We have scheduled on here is the monument that leads coming from the north into Coron del Mar, but we also have a monument at our south end of the village leading in, and that was omitted, and I think that should be on there. We spent a lot of time creating the identity of the Coron del Mar Village, and so I would ask my fellow council members to authorize that we have that additional monument.
Okay, any other public... Any other comment on this item? Does the staff have anything to say about that, or is there a reason why it was omitted or not omitted?
I don't know the reason why it was omitted. Do you have a particular location that you would like that?
It can go where it is, probably, where the existing one is. When I spoke to Sharon, I gathered it was just more of an oversight. They sort of thought, oh, we've got one, and really weren't thinking about the second one.
Okay. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this matter? Seeing no one, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number nineteen. This is called by Doris Otting.
Hi, yes, hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Doris Otting. I live in Newport Beach. On page six of the document, it talks about additional solid waste collection services, and it talks about bulk items shall occur within one week of request by customer and shall be collected on the same day as the trash and the recycling collection. And then if you go on to page... And then if you go on to page, okay, page 13, it talks about the equipment list, and it says, "Vehicle used for collection services must be fully automated, side-loading refuse trucks, using a fully mechanized arm to pick up and dump automated waste collection containers. Driver should not exit the vehicle to assist with securing the container to or lifting of the container into the refuse collection truck." You can't pick up bulk items that way, and so there has to be something noting that there's going to be another type of vehicle that will be needed up in that area for bulk item pickup. And if you want to make that also to be a CNG or alternative AQMD vehicle, I think that should be noted, because that wasn't brought up at the last meeting where you discussed all this. And so I just thought there should be some clarification on that. And secondly, it would be nice if you had some type of a system where you actually had someone from the general services department, you know, visually look at people's trucks and, like the city of Irvine, they actually have one of their policemen do, you know, like a highway inspection on every vehicle that operates within their city. They're charged money for that, and then they get a tag stating that this is the truck that's going to operate in the city of Irvine. Costa Mesa does like a visual inspection, that might have changed, I didn't call them, but anyway, and then they give you like a tag or like an identification in your windshield and say that this is the vehicle that's going to operate in the city of Costa Mesa. We don't do that. So we let any vehicle that they might have operate, and we don't look at them. And even brand-new vehicles in the back where you have to open up the back door and you have to, you know, like dump out the trash, sometimes when they come from the factory brand-new, the sealers don't work right, okay? So there's all, you know, there can be liquid, you know, leaking. And I would think that we live in, you know, the richest city in Orange County, and I think we should take the time, since we want to think about an ordinance, which I think our city attorney has more important things to do, because as you found out, the easy way, I mean, like the trash haulers will always tell you what's wrong with their competitor, and they have no problems in calling Mr. Harmon, we have no problems in calling Mr. Niederhaus. People have no problems in calling and saying there's a container on such-and-such street that isn't certified or isn't, you know, like, isn't licensed to be in the city of Newport Beach. So you don't really need anything more than what you have. You have the best system possible and you could not make it any better. The only way to make it any better is to think of a plan where you're going to identify the vehicles and you're going to at least have to once physically look at these trucks that you have operating on the city streets. I think that's really, really important. It's time, and you can actually make a few pennies off of it, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Otting. Anyone else have any comment on this? Anyone from council? Yes, council member?
Yeah, I do. I, first off, I think this is a very, very big improvement in how we're going to go about the contracting process here, and as long as it's been pulled. I did, I did have a number of suggestions for the RFP, and I'm thinking probably the easiest thing to do would be for me to meet with staff here in the next couple of days. I don't want to delay the process. I'd be glad to share a few more thoughts regarding the organization of the RFP. I don't think they'll be substantive, and so if the council has no problem with that, I'd like an opportunity to do that in the next two days.
Is, because by, well, the recommendation here says direct staff to issue the revised RFP, which is attached to this report, so are we limiting any further input into this by doing that?
You could, I think, I think the approach that Councilmember Hen is, saying that the suggestions would not be substantive as to the content of this, they might be just more formatting or clarification of what's already in here. So I think you could go ahead and make that.
Are they not substantive?
I'd be glad to let you decide whether or not they're substantive enough to be brought back to council.
Well, I mean, do we need to, are we, do we need to, is it typical that we would approve the RFP?
No, generally not.
So can we delete that portion from this recommendation?
Well, what you could do is you could just say direct.
Based upon?
It could be direct, direct the staff to go ahead and reissue the RFP and substantially the form of the attached.
And Mr. Mayor, I think Ms. Otting makes a good point, and we will make that change to section number two on page six, saying that that might be an alternative vehicle.
So I think that would be an appropriate motion, and then that leaves open the ability for any other comments that we might get before we issue it.
Okay, Councilwoman Gardner?
Well, I just wanted to ask Mark Harmon. You look like you've been sitting too long.
I have, since 2:30, just like you.
What about some kind of inspection?
It's possible. Again, you know, it's just a matter of time and the personnel to do that, that thing. I think the idea of a tag or sticker on a truck is a good one. After we've inspected or looked at a truck, we certainly can put a tag on it. You know, I, I think Ms. Otting makes a good point, though, a brand-new truck, we could put a tag on it, goes to the landfill. The, you know, the gasket at the, at the back of the truck could become pinched at the landfill and you've got a spill all over. So we can do that, we can do a visual check and tag it, but it, you know, it doesn't ensure that problems won't happen.
We can, along the lines of what was requested by Councilmember Curry and some of the issues that were raised, maybe rather than actually do an ordinance, because our franchise actually does have some of the requirements already in it that Councilmember Curry suggested, and, and then there's some other issues that were raised here without, with regards to how the city manages its franchised contractors that provide solid waste, commercial solid waste services in the city, then maybe a future study session to go over those types of issues and kind of the pros and cons for the best way to handle it might be a good start, and then we could see where we might need to make some amendments to our franchise ordinance.
I did have one further question. There was mention in here about formation of a council subcommittee to review the responses to the RFP. I guess that'll be for a follow-on item, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman Curry?
Yeah, it appears as that we have a consensus to rebid this contract, so we will do that. But I would just note that it comes at a cost of about $29,000 to extend the existing agreement, and we're putting sort of at risk the savings of between $600,000 and $1,000,000 over the life of the contract that was achieved as compared to the status quo. So I, for one, will be very interested in seeing the results of this rebid to ensure that the interests of the taxpayers are protected as we continue this process going forward.
I would make a motion for the staff recommendation.
Second.
And this is with the request severed?
Yes.
Yeah, hang on. Okay, we have a motion and a second? Okay. Why don't you come up?
Good evening, I'm Dave Al, actually a 31-year, I figured out, 31-year homeowner in Newport Beach. I'm actually a trash man, too, which you probably don't know. I've never spoken to the council before, yet I've probably been to a thousand council meetings throughout Southern California. I'm with Republic Services. We don't really have a dog in this fight at all, but as a resident, and no offense by saying dogged any of my friends out here, it's not personal, but a couple of recommendations I would make, having, well, 22 years' experience in franchise administration for trash. It was brought up about safety issues, and I think that the California Highway Patrol does a biannual inspection, and this may solve your problem in a very easy way. It's probably the most comprehensive inspection that can be done of any type of fleet. It's very few, very seldom do you even pass this inspection the first time. I would make it a recommendation in your permit process, not only for the permitting of the, this contract you're going out, but any permitting in the city of Newport Beach should forward the inspection from the California Highway Patrol to the city administrator of the contracts. This way you would have a review of, I think, the council member mentioned earlier, there is a, this is an incredibly detailed analysis of your fleet, and any operator here will tell you the same thing. It's, it's like a major audit, and it's very difficult to pass, and those results should be made either pass or don't pass. So you would have that information available to you, which would solve some of your problems. The other recommendation I would make to you folks in going through this process is to take some of the politics out of it, and I know it's very difficult to say that, and we are a very political industry. But the most successful bid processes I've gone through, and we've won some and we've lost some, are the processes where you separate the RFQ and RFP. And the RFQ is a request for qualifications, and you actually ask people to submit those separately. And you review the qualifications, and you say, do you want this person operating in your community or not? Either yes or no, it's either up or down. If they're in, then you have a pile of folks in. If they're not in, you return their RFP or their pricing unopened, just give it back to them. Then you open up the qualified bidders, low bid wins it. It eliminates that person, well, their bid is a little bit higher than these folks, but yet are a little bit better. Either you're qualified or you're not qualified. If you're qualified, you're in, you go with a low bidder. In, again, 22 years of doing this, too long, I've found that that's a very, very fair way of approaching it, and it takes a lot of the pressure off you folks, it takes a lot of the lobbying away, and it makes it a very clean process. And again, as a resident of Newport Beach, I like to see our industry take the high road, and I think it's very important, and I think this is one of the areas where it really can happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else that would like to speak to this matter from the public? Okay, I'll close the public comments section. Did your amendment, or your, your, it includes substantially in the form? Okay, then I'll call for the vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes our consent calendar. Move on to our public, sorry? Okay, we'll move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is number, item number 25, vacation of an existing sewer and water easement and acceptance of new sewer and water easements at 1600 Newport Center Drive. This has been continued from our May 22 meeting. Do you have a staff report on this?
Yes, Mayor, essentially, it's kind of a cut and dry. The applicant is asking to relocate sewer and water easement on a property in order to, you know, develop the property. Staff has no real problems with this issue, and it's just essentially relocation so that the property owner can utilize their property.
Okay, I believe Councilmember Solich had some comments on this, if your issue's been resolved. Okay, very good. Anybody else, council? Anybody from the public that wants to comment on this item?
I'm over the recommended item.
Second.
Okay, I'll close the public comments, and we have a second from Councilwoman Daigle. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is number 26, our fiscal year 2000 to 2008 proposed budget hearing. Do you have a staff report?
Dennis Danner is slowly coming forward. This is something that we do each year, though, and the meeting prior to when council adopts the meet, the budget, which is, the adoption is always the second meeting in June. So in the first meeting in June, we always have a, a public hearing so that the public has the opportunity to say what they would like to say about the budget, and Dennis, I'll let you come here.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor and members of city council, we're actually holding two public hearings tonight that are very much related to each other. The first one, as the City Manager indicated, is the public hearing on our proposed budget for the 2007-2008 fiscal year. You, as a council, have reviewed this budget at three study sessions, the latest being this afternoon, and we still have one, one or two departments to go through at our next meeting, next study session. But tonight is the time to hold the public hearing on this budget and take public input and prepare any checklist items that you'd like to see added to the budget. And as the City Manager indicated, we'll bring this back to you at your next meeting for adoption of the budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Dennis.
A question, when, when do we go through the checklist and say yea or nay? Is that next?
That'd be the next meeting. As I should mention, we've got probably about seven or eight items on the checklist that we've, we've added through the discussion at the budget review sessions.
Council included a couple today.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else in the council have any questions with Dennis? Okay, I'll open it up for the public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to comment on our 2007-2008 proposed budget? Seeing no one, I will bring it back for motion in council? If there is any, oh, direct, yeah, direct resolution?
So moved.
Okay. Okay. All right, please vote.
Motion carries.
Too late to vote. Please register that Councilwoman Curry would have voted in favor of this. All right, let's move on to item number 27, which is our 2007-2008 appropriation limit hearing.
Mayor and members of city council, this is, as I mentioned, very much related to the public hearing you just held. The Article 13B of the state constitution, which was originally passed as Proposition Four, commonly known as the GAN initiative, limits the appropriations a city can spend on, from proceeds of taxes, and that's exactly what it sounds like. It's your property tax, your sales tax, motor vehicle tax, et cetera, et cetera. We're limited to the amount of appropriations that you can spend on those proceeds of taxes, and it's increased each year by a factor of population increase and CPI. And this year, we've computed appropriation limit, and as you can see on the second page of the staff report, the amount of cushion that you have, the amount that you're underneath your appropriation limit is $19,266,776. So again, I think this is just a formality that you have to adopt this by resolution and hold this public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Anybody have any questions with Dennis? All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment and entertain a motion. Second. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Leepo? Oh, Oral Port, sorry. Anybody from council have Oral Port? Or, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of that. Public com, well, we'll do what we're about. Just kidding, folks. Public comments, public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
My name is Bill Ficker, and I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I'll be very brief and report on the initiative. On Thursday, the June 14th, at 11:00 a.m., there will be a kickoff and press announcement of the initiative signature drive for the city hall in the park. If signatures of 15% of the approximately 60,000 registered voters in Newport Beach are obtained by August 29th, 2007, Newport Beach voters will be able to decide at the ballot box if our charter should be amended to locate the new city hall behind the central library in the proposed Newport Center Park, still leaving a 10-acre passive park. It is anticipated that this vote would occur at the February 5th, 2008 presidential primary. Petitions will be available on Thursday, and for more information, you can call 949-723-3185 or check our website at www.cithallinthepark.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ficker. Mr. Heffernan, welcome.
Evening, council. John Heffernan, former council member, former mayor. I'm here to do something I should have done a while back, and that is, back in April 18th, I filed a complaint in Sacramento in the Fair Political Practices Committee against Deborah Allen. Her comments she made to me in a phone conversation on September 8th, 2005. I'm going to file this formally with the city, I'm sorry I didn't do it sooner, along with the comments by the council that were printed in the pilot. I think that should be a record as well. Since that time, we checked with the committee today. They won't give you a progress report. They've spoken to me twice since I filed this and went over, 61 pages, that's what I filed, with attachments and explanations, generally posing a conflict of interest based upon Ms. Allen being within 500 feet of the proposed passive park, which is agenda item tonight, this isn't about that agenda item, and that without proof that she, that there is no conflict, she does have one, and that's the gist of this. I'm going to file this with the city clerk, and so it'll be on file. Thank you.
Mr. Heffernan, anybody else has a comment on a non-agenda item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Doris Otting. I live in Newport Beach. I want to, to applaud- I want to, to applaud Mary Lee Jackson for the great job that she has done in the transference where we have our own cameras now, and you're showing, and we're doing our own videoing, and they look really nice, and the sound is really good and everything. And since we have these cameras, and since there are days when we run hours of city committees, I was hoping that there could be some point in the future where perhaps you might use them to, to tape and to show the planning commission meetings. Even if you don't want to show the planning commission meetings live, you could do them as a program on the computer, and people could click on and see what's going on in the planning commission. Also, there are other committees, like harbor, harbors and beaches. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes on, and people have no way of knowing and have an interest in their important things. So, okay, everyone's busy reading the document that John just gave you guys, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dolores. You'll notice that the cameras are affixed to the walls now, thanks to Councilman Nichols, who showed us that we better get them fixed to the wall before we have a problem. Anybody else that has a comment on a non-agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one follow-up question regarding what Mr. Heffernan distributed. Is this something that requires any sort of response or action on the part of the city?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'll close public comments now, and we'll entertain oral reports from city council members on committee activities. We'll start with Councilman Hen.
I have no.
Actually, does anybody, just light your button up if you have one. Councilman Solich.
Thank you. Just a quick report on the General Plan Implementation Committee. I want to bring the full council up to date as far as what we're doing on the committee. We're making substantial progress on a number of fronts, but one of them is in regulating issues relating to building height and measuring building pads, how high the building will sit from the pad, and what types of approach we're going to take on it. And basically, the committee is focusing on a building envelope approach where we're going to be looking at eliminating floor area ratios and using lot coverage and setbacks along with the building envelope as the main methodology of controlling building size and, and mass. And then in addition to that, we're looking at how we're going to deal with this residential design review process that we, we called for in the, in the general plan. And basically, the committee, to this point, has reached the conclusion that we want to start off with the building envelope approach and use that as much as possible, and then default to development standards to get the kind of buildings that we want that you can't get completely with the building envelope approach. And then, and only then, when you can't achieve your goals through the first two methods, would we get into a discretionary design review process. We're not looking to set up a system like they have, say, in Laguna Beach, where it gets to be a, a real battle to get home designs approved, and you just get into a, a lot of problems with that. The reason I bring it up is that probably in a couple of more meetings of the committee, I think we'll have our, our thoughts solidified to the point that I'd like to have it brought back to the council at a study session, because one thing that the committee doesn't want to have happen is come, when December comes around and we're having hearings on the zoning ordinance, to have set up a process that the rest of the council wasn't up to speed and maybe not necessarily in agreement with. This can get to be tricky to deal with and controversial, particularly when you get into reviewing residential designs and residential designs, the design standards. And I, we've, we've got a good team on our committee. We've got three council members, three planning commissioners, and then we've also got a good technical advisory team of architects and builders in Newport Beach who kind of take a look at what we do from the practical standpoint. So hopefully, in a couple of council meetings, we'll have something to have the full council take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Webb.
I'd just like to, the city of Newport Beach is a member of the Transportation Quarter Agency, San Joaquin Hills Transportation Quarter. And at our last meeting, I'm your representative on that board, at our last meeting, we announced the hiring of a new CEO for the Transportation Quarter Agencies. His name is Thomas E. Margrow, and he comes to us from the Bay Area Rapid Transit area. He retired from there as general manager and has ten years of experience, and we feel that he will be a, a great individual to take over from Bill Woollett, who has been the CEO for the last three or four years, and prior to that, ten or twelve years. So we, I think are lucky to have gotten disqualified in an individual. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, there will be a finance committee meeting this Friday at one P.M. in the council conference room, and we're in the process of scoping a study connected to the cost of services and looking at some benchmarking. And it looks as if we'll also be taking up the Bellboa ferry lease. And certainly, the committee is, is very open to suggestions by other council members and members of the committee on issues that you might want us to take up. And then, secondly, the media committee will be meeting this Monday at three P.M., and we'll be hearing kind of the menu of activities that we might consider as far as public information, and then also a, a new resource to help us carry that out. And that will take place Monday at three P.M., and we'll also hear from an RF engineer on the issue of Wi-Fi and specifically the health standards that are connected to regulating Wi-Fi transmission. So, thank you.
Thank you. And the only thing I'd like to report is that we did have our annual meeting of the Fourth of July Committee. I was attended by a number of residents from the West Newport Beach Association, as well as representatives from the, the police and fire department. Basically, we're going to go forward with the same plan as last year for Fourth of July, you know, services from the police as far as protecting, you know, the residents on the peninsula, and making sure that it's a safe day for everyone. Peninsula will be closing at Bellbowl, or, well, Superior and Coast Highway. The entrance to the peninsula will be closing at twelve noon till roughly twelve o'clock, all the way down to, or twelve P.M., all the way down to the Albertson's Market on Thirty Second Street. So if you live there, you'll have to either exit before that, or you'll be stuck there. And if you're, if you've exited, you won't be able to get back in with your vehicle. It'll be just pedestrian only. Fines will be tripled in that time period for anybody getting a, a fine, so certainly you don't want to get a ticket on that day, because it'll be quite expensive. But we've been very successful in managing to control the crowds that are coming down on Fourth of July. Luckily, this week, or this year, Fourth of July's on a Wednesday, so hopefully, most people will have to be back to work Thursday morning, and the festivities will end earlier than, than usual. So with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report.
Mayor Rosansky and members of the city council, Planning Commission had one major discretionary item on the agenda. That was the three thirty-three Bayside, was a request for an outdoor dining area to be added to the existing restaurant because of the proximity to Linda Isle. Quite a few of the neighbors across the water came and expressed their concerns about the noise. After a long debate, the Planning Commission did provide direction to city staff to come up with some mitigation measures and bring those back for consideration and adoption at the June twenty-first meeting. Planning Commission also reviewed the preliminary capital improvement program, founded in conformance with all policies, including the general plan of the city, and recommended city council adoption with the proviso that biological study be conducted prior to dredging of the Semenex Slough. And lastly, they received a report on Albertson's Market.
Think that's slough.
Sleuth, Slough.
Semenex slough.
Excuse me, I called it Slough. Everybody laughed at that. Thank you, sir. Okay, I give myself.
Don't insult our slough.
It's a water body.
Or, or a body of water, depending on how you look at it.
And lastly.
It's, it's the stuff that sloughs off the slope into the slough. If you can say that ten times, we'll give you a raise.
Forget it. But thank you for the offer.
They're calling it up.
Uh, slough, okay. And lastly, we get, Planning was received, received a report on Albertson's Market, and the work staff's done to bring them into compliance with their conditions of approval.
Is that the Albertson's and Cronedale Mar, it didn't say?
Yes, it is. And we found they were not in compliance, but we got the manager to come in, and Planning Commission was okay with the idea that we would come back and report to them in a year about how they've been complying since they've been.
Did you ask them to bring back double coupons?
No, that was not one of the conditions. It's the same old prices.
Think about it, okay.
I don't want to slough it off, but.
Good one, touche. Thank you, Mr. Leepo. Okay, our next agenda item is Continued Business, item number twenty-nine. Council decision to proceed with the preparation of plans and specifications for Newport Center Park's middle phase with totlot restroom and parking lot components, increasing the budget for such planning and finalizing park naming rights. Do we have a staff report?
We do have a staff report. Mr. Mayor, this item is coming back at the request of Councilman Solich, who made the request at the last meeting, and he requested that council take action on four independent items. One would be to approve construction of the park based on the currently approved park concept plan and incorporating the suggestions of PBNR for a totlot restroom and addition of an upper parking lot. Construction would be accomplished in phases with the middle phase coming first. The second item would be to accept a six hundred thousand dollar donation towards the construction of the middle phase in exchange for the naming rights of the entire park, with the provision that other park component naming rights will be available, and then direct staff to negotiate the naming rights agreement. Item number three is to provide conceptual approval to amend the upcoming budget oh seven, oh eight, this is for the park budget, from two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand, subject to what the final construction bids might be. And four would be to direct staff to complete construction documents for the middle section phase as soon as possible, and then put them out to bid. The staff report contains a, a number of prior staff reports and minutes that show council actions and discussion on items. I do need to apologize for, it was difficult to pick up the item that was referenced in the staff report, the memo from Sharon Wood, because it wasn't identified by her, June sixth, two thousand and seven, but it is the one that starts off SIOSHA provisions for Newport Center Park, and it is dated six, six, oh seven on the upper right-hand section. So I apologize for not making that more clear in the information that was attached to the staff report. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my report.
I had a couple of questions as a staff report.
Okay, go ahead.
For the city attorney, what seemed to be, seems to be relevant and was left out of the staff analysis is this idea of new development justifying the park. And it seems to me, when you look at alternatives, we just had our fee in lieu of park land that the city would have the discretion to require land dedication. So for example, the, the developer could require dedication of the parcel north of San Miguel. We could require the developer pocket parks, which would be more immediate, a variety of options. So would that be within the, the fee in lieu of, of park that we could, instead of that, we could require a land dedication?
Depending upon the development proposal that's put forth, correct, you could require, the council could require a dedication, either solely dedication, a mix of dedication and fees.
Okay. And then when I was looking at the fee issue, is, is that kind of an either, I mean, I mean, first is if, if they paid fees and we could go out and purchase land, but another scenario could be if they paid fees, we use that for improvements. That doesn't mean there, that they also have an acreage requirement.
Well, the fees are based upon acreage requirements, so it would depend upon the dedication that would be required by the population of the subdivision that is going to be produced.
My question, though, is if you use the fees for improvements, then you don't get the land.
If you only accept, if, if the approval of the project would, would only require the payment of fees and not the dedication of land, that's correct.
Okay. And then, on the issue of convenience, I went to the Google Map Earth, and I noticed that the distance between MUH three, which is the area authorized for development in the park, is about point nine miles, which is the same as to Upper Newport Back Bay, and also to, a little bit less to Irvine Terrace Park. So in terms of, although the new residents would be rational users of the park, Newport Center Park, it seems to me that they would also have other alternatives to actually use a park.
Yes, and the, the, the park dedication fees and the dedication of land requirements are related to the rec and open space element of the general plan. So looking at the open space or the park element at Newport Center Park versus some other parks, it doesn't necessarily have to be a community park, a neighborhood park. It could be a community park or other type of recreation facility that would serve those, those residents of the, of the new subdivision.
Okay. Have there been any studies done that look at, you know, when someone starts to get into a car to go to a park? I mean, because it seems as if what we're trying to achieve here is a mixed-use development, and so if, if people have to get into their car to go to a park, I mean, has there been any studies done on that?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
It's, it's not my area of, of parks, of park design, but there is provisions also in the code that authorize within a subdivision for a, a percentage of the obligations under the, the subdivision map to provide parks with, either in, by dedication or fees, and to get a credit for up to twenty percent for any private recreational facilities that are provided within that subdivision.
Okay, so the developer could have some park, pocket parks, they could have the twenty percent credit for the facility, you know, could, could be a mix of, of, of kinds of things.
It would, yes, it would depend upon the proposal by the developer and the requirements of the city council in approving that project.
Okay. I just wanted to establish that although this park is an alternative, it wouldn't seem to be the only alternative, you know, in terms of the park for, for new residents?
Councilman Solich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, maybe I can make our job a little bit easier this evening. Kind of feel like I'm in movie Groundhog Day. Seems like every couple of meetings this comes up. I think I first made this proposal back in first meeting in December. Anyway, at the last council meeting, some concern was expressed by some members of the council over the, over item number two and the four actions that we're talking about here this evening, accepting the six hundred thousand dollar, dollar donation. And I want to make a suggestion this evening to maybe help move this along a little easier, although I don't expect it'll be easy. And that is that, that we continue item number two. It's not critical to the actual design of, and the approval of the phase and concept of the park to deal with that issue this evening. So I'm going to recommend that we delay item number two, and then in conjunction with that, item number three really needs to get delayed because the budget amendment is tied directly back into the, to the amount of donation. So what I would do to kick, kick this off this evening is to, is to make a motion that, that the council approve items number one, which is approve the construction of the park, as Mr. Blue Dow outlined, and item number four, which is direct the staff to complete the construction documents for the middle section phase as soon as possible and put them out to bid, and that we delay items two and three to come back later at a time when the plans are closer to completion and we have a better idea on, on what the final construction cost would be. So that, that would be my motion this evening.
Second. Okay, any other council members? Yes, Councilman Webb?
Well, in commenting on the recommended actions, I have real serious concerns about how we can vote on those items, because I don't feel that we have sufficient information to base our vote. And I'd like to go through some of the, the items that I've considered in there. As far as I can, item number one, which relates to base, to approve the construction based on the currently approved park concept plan with the middle phase coming first. At a study session in January of two thousand and five, city council gave a favorable response to the conceptual plan. Three of the current city council members were not on the council then. Our city council never has, at a public council meeting, approved the conceptual plan. The two thousand and five conceptual plan is no longer what is being considered tonight. With the more recent PBNR commission review, a number of items have been added, which impacts the concept plan that was shown in, in two thousand and five. In September two thousand and six, council members.
In September 2006, council member Selich, after meeting with a prospective donor, suggested major changes to the northern portion of the park. The council has not reviewed or approved these changes and is rather, is really only aware of the increased cost estimates related to them. Mr. Selich proposed to the staff and consultant a three-phase construction schedule. With revisions and a new concept for the northerly part of the park, the concept has gone from a $1.7 million park to a $4.3 million park. And the $4.3 million adds about another $400,000 over what we were shown last week because of restroom, tot lot, and parking areas. We're being asked to approve the middle phase with added items for preparation of construction documents tonight. There's not a clear definition of the project phases. I have not seen anything other than a very preliminary cost estimates define what work is done. Also, the February report that we got, February 2007, indicated 1.5 acres of landscaping would be wasted and have to be done, redone with phase two. This is a cost of about $200,000 to $300,000. Can we afford that extravagance? Tonight, we're asked to add a tot lot, restroom, picnic tables, benches, and a parking lot for phase one. Staff estimates the cost will be $400,000 to $450,000 on this. Are we sure it won't be $600,000 when the final details are worked out? Phase one is now estimated to be $1.9 million with a total park estimate of $4.3. This is far from what we anticipated in the original concept plan. How many of the rest of the council members have actually reviewed the plans in detail? Have you actually taken a set of plans and rolled them out and looked at them? How can you approve something you haven't seen? For instance, there are no phasing plans yet that have been shown on drawings so that we can see what is going to be constructed under the middle phase, what would be constructed under phase two, and what would be under phase three. So I really don't know what the details are. I mentioned in February, and it's still the case, based on the latest plans I've looked at, that there's an area in the vicinity of the extension of Fair Lawn which will be 12 feet higher than it exists today. And close to 10,000 cubic yards of material will be placed in that area. I'm almost certain that this raised height from the park will affect the view of the ocean as you drive south on MacArthur Boulevard. It may also impact views from the houses on Surfline Ray. I asked my colleagues in the council, do you really want to approve a plan that will impact public views on MacArthur Boulevard? In orange is delineated a cross-section, which indicates where 12 feet of fill will be placed out on our park site. In my analysis of looking at this, with all the changes that are being proposed related to the parking lot, the restroom, tot lot, that fill should probably not be placed. And we should look at a revised, if we go forward with this, a revised phase, which would more reasonably look at that site and not potentially block views. Mr. Selich on recommendation two has continued that. On recommendation three, even though it's been continued, I'd like to comment that, that even with the extra money that Mr. Selich had suggested, that that's still a million dollars short of being able to fund the project in phase one. As staff has estimated, that's about a $1.9 million project. And we're getting ready to put, get plans drawn and put out to bid for a project that is in our budget shown at currently $800,000, which may come in at $2 million. And should we be forced to look at a plan later on, which, where we're going to have to come up with a substantial increased amount of money? When we say complete, for recommendation four, when we say complete construction documents for the middle section as soon as possible and put them out to bid. This is like putting the cart before the horse. The middle section of the conceptual plan has not been created yet. There's no drawings that the consultant, as far as I know, has put together to really define that. How can we get in good conscience, rush through a plan preparation, and get bids before the city council can see what will be built and determine what the impacts may be? I would much rather make adjustments in a plan before it is bid rather than after the bids have been received. So I can't support either recommendation one or four because I don't feel sufficient information has been provided to the city council to define the project and define what the concept is today. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in council? Councilwoman Gardner?
It is, it is deja vu. I guess I'm frustrated because I think that there's, I don't know what we can do that would make you vote to approve it, probably. I mean, it's just my sense is that it's just not in favor of the park, so it doesn't matter. But I'm particularly frustrated because one of the things we heard as a complaint was, this is just a passive park, there's nothing there. And so PBNR came back and said, yeah, we don't want it to be an active park in terms of playing fields, but we do want to have more things for the public, so a tot lot and that sort of thing, to make it more attractive. And I think in terms of probably answering some of the critics. And yet now, we're told that this is another reason not to go forward because of these additions. So it is frustrating to try to move forward with this project at all.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Selich?
Yeah, I just want to respond to some of Councilwoman Webb's comments. First of all, the park plans, the construction documents are substantially completed in accordance with the concept plan that the council approved. The only thing that we're doing here is that we're creating a phasing plan, number one. And number two, we're adding certain elements into the plan that have been demanded by, or requested, I guess I should say, by, by members of this council, including the parking lot for the upper area. So that's being added. And then going back to the Parks Commission and seeking more amenities in this park that would turn it into more of an active kind of a park that had been suggested by the, by the Parks Commission and one by myself. So I, you know, it isn't a matter that we don't know what we're doing or that we're getting the cart before the horse. The fact of the matter is, these plans are substantially completed. We're talking about phasing them and adding some additional elements. And when they go out to bid, we'll be looking at what the costs are of everything on it. And we may decide that maybe there's some phasing of some of the elements that go in the park. Maybe we don't put a tot lot in right away, I don't know. But we're certainly not getting into this, not knowing what we're doing or giving a blank checkbook or anything. We've got a set of plans that's substantially committed, and it's just a matter of finishing those up, creating them into a phasing concept, and then adding these additional elements. So I, I don't see anything irresponsible about moving ahead right now on this and moving forward on this park. Thank you.
Councilman Curry?
I'd like to follow up on Councilmember Dagel's comments about the development and the new residents will be moving into this area. Pursuant to our new park in Luffy, the 450 residential units that will be built in Fashion Island area will generate more than $12 million in park fees. These are fees that can only be used for parks and open space. It seems to me that we ought to provide a park for those people who are paying for that park, ultimately in the cost of their homes as they move in. Here we have a park site. Those funds cannot be used for anything other than a park. Now, there's some people who may want to use them for parks in other parts of the city. And in fact, there's going to be sufficient money generated that those funds will in fact be used in other parts of the city. But fundamentally, those neighbors who are going to be paying for those, paying that fee as part of the price of their homes, deserve to have a park, a first-class park, not dirt on a roof, where they can use it in their neighborhood, which is why I think it's completely appropriate as we begin moving forward now as those units are moving through the development process to push forward with Councilman Selich's idea, to move forward with the design of the park.
Any other comments?
I think that, Councilman Curry, and I'll do respect your jump in the gun a little bit because we haven't seen the developers' plans. It may be that they are making provisions for pocket parks and other types of things. So they may have, they might unfold an idea that would be quite a good idea. And I think we should be open to that.
Mr. Gardner, Councilman Gardner? Gave you the motion there.
I just, as a matter of curiosity, I thought that there was a fifth part to this. And are you, did you deliberately?
Well, there was, and it was, it was the DIMJIM study. But until that exceeds the city manager's authorization, it doesn't have to come back to the council.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments? Anybody from the public wanting to comment on this item?
You just, that comment you just made, that, at the last meeting, thank you, Councilwoman Gardner. My name is Dolores Thodding, I live in Newport Beach. There was an item to take a look at what it would cost to, because I guess over at the transit place or wherever, wasn't going to work. And so the company DIMJIM or whatever they are, please, I don't mean to, you know, sound flip. I just don't know their name, and it's not on the report. They were supposed to come back. So now, I'm confused. You just said that unless it exceeds the city manager's amount of money, that it doesn't have to come back to the public? Is that what I just heard? I'm confused.
Well, there's, there's an existing contract with DIMJIM. And this is an extension of that contract. The city manager has certain authority to go beyond the scope of that contract for a certain dollar amount. As long as DIMJIM's cost to do the analysis of that site doesn't exceed that, it doesn't have to come back to the city council. If it does exceed that, then he'll have to bring it back to the city council.
Yeah, but isn't this something that everyone would want to see? I mean, why wouldn't we want to share the information from?
No, the information, we're talking about a contract amendment. You're confusing the issue.
So they haven't looked at the, at the site at the library then yet?
No, may I clarify? The motion that Councilmember Selich made at the last meeting was to authorize or direct the consultant to go ahead and look at the library site and for staff to look at the cost that would be required to amend the contract that they have to look, to look at the OCTA site and to amend it to add on, to also look at the Newport Park site. So that was already taken, that action and direction was already given. The only reason why it would come back to the council would be if the amendment or the extra cost to do the extra study costs more
than what?
than the city manager has authority to approve.
Right, I understand that now. Okay, so, all right, so now I'm really confused because you want to talk about deja vu. This is kind of like Marina Park. When we had the initiative going and Steve Sutherland going forward with the plans and the city going forward with the plans and, and people out there collecting signatures. And this is like the same thing. We're doing it all over again, and it hasn't even been that long ago. I just don't understand where you have an item that is kind of like split the city at this point. It's going out in an initiative. Why are we spending money like this right now? I mean, what would happen if we waited until we find out what the initiative is all about? I know that a lot of you up there don't like the right to vote, but I'm like the champion of the right to vote. I mean, right, right, former mayor Webb? Yeah. During my interview process, for the seat that you got, Councilmember Curry, the appointment process, that was what I was told by everybody, was that I believe in the right to vote, and so they couldn't appoint me for that site. And I'm, I think it's quite funny, it's very comical, that here we are, you know, and we're going to all have the right to vote. So I have no, I have no feeling about this park or this city hall at this time. What I do have a strong feeling about is spending money that we could use to do other things with at this time to go forward with the same scenario that happened with Marina Park. And I would think that we wouldn't want to go forward with anything until we get the DIMJIM study completed. I mean, why are we spending money on a study to find out if it can work or not? And yet, you're going to still go forward with putting a park when maybe it would work to be a city hall? I don't know, but people are going to vote on this. And this is where some of you are going to be running for reelection, and it's going to be like crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores.
Barry Allen, live in Corona Del Mar. Nobody had mentioned the thing that Dolores brought up, and I think it's like the elephant in the room. And that's what I wanted to address, is I think that there's some concern on the part of the council members, an honest concern, that they shouldn't be voting on this because somebody says they got an initiative or somebody's going to do something. Well, I've been active in the city for a long time, and most of you have too. And I've never seen the council fail to follow what the majority's going to do when there's a threat of a lawsuit, or a threat of a recall, or any other action by someone, that the council majority's going to, going to stop doing something because someone's saying, well, I'm going to do something, I'm going to get an initiative, or I'm going to get some petitions alive, I'm going to have a vote. And I think that's the problem. In this particular case, I think it's logical and appropriate to continue with the planning and construction of this park. It's been going on for a long time. Otherwise, the council would basically be saying to someone, well, you know, threaten a lawsuit, you know, go forward with some kind of initiatives, start collecting some signatures, and all of a sudden, we're going to bring the city to a halt as long as someone starts doing this. And I think the, what it really says is if the daily pilot makes a big issue of something, and if the daily pilot's against the council majority, then the council minority's going to say, well, don't do anything because, you know, let's try and resolve this among ourselves and get agreement among everybody before we go any further. And that's why I think that the council should vote on the subject tonight, and they should approve going forward with the plans and the building of the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hi, I'm John Heffernan, Port Street resident, former councilman, former mayor. I've heard this debate, I was part of the debate when I was on the other side here. I think in a nutshell, if you proceed with, the city has already spent $802,000 on the last city hall that was supposed to be here. $42,000 more on top of that's been allocated for, instead of the OCTA and potentially this site. Now you're going to okay a lot of work to proceed on this park work here. Somebody's accountable for that money. I voted against it the last time because I didn't think it should be here. Now you're proceeding with a park that some would say precludes that site from being a mixed-use site, having city hall and park. There's initiative underway. I think this is a $50 million blunder that's about to get started right here tonight. And you're going to be held accountable, the majority that votes for it. And there's election coming up soon, there's initiative even before that. Somebody had the foresight and sense 15 years ago when they could have cited the main library, probably back up on that OCTA site, and they didn't. And we have a wonderful library, we're all proud of it. But somehow now, it's a city hall, we're going to maybe go down the same road and not use this park site, which by the way, belongs to all of us. If that's not a $50 million slab of land, tell me it's not. Because it's a wonderful site, and it belongs to all of us. And the majority here tonight, they proceed with the park, are denying that site potentially for our city hall for the next 50 years, where when there's going to be a reception, it's not going to be potentially back up the street at Avocado, but it will be on a wonderful terrace view all the way to Huntington Beach from that site. And also, you, if you proceed with the park, you have the risk that that park ends up just like PCH and Jamboree, another wonderful piece of land that no one uses. No one has told me that people are going to use this park any more than the last one. But the difference is, now you've taken a $50 million slab of land and made a park out of it that may not get used. And you've now not, now you will take it off the deck for potentially the cipher city hall. No, you're entitled to vote on this, but somebody's going to be looking down the barrel at you later on because what you do tonight, either you're going to waste money and then go back and use it potentially for the city hall site, or you're just going to preclude it forever from being used as a city hall site. And we're going to have an inferior site. There's no question, any other site, the next to the library is inferior. And the people out in the street, I've not come here but twice since I was out of office, are upset about this, and they're going to hold you accountable. You don't just live in this city hall, you better start listening to people outside. And after tonight, you may, you may be going down the park road, and you're entitled to do it. You're the decision makers. But people take note who votes to proceed with the park tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Tom Olson, Corona Del Mar. I think everything that could possibly said about the merits of the city hall or the park has been said in triplicate. All I can say is it perplexes me that even now, a minority on this council continues to seem to renounce this collective responsibility, and to thwart the council's own processes and the will of the public. What I know about the will of the public, what all of us know. Number one, the city's own extensive outreach established that people want quality of life, open space, and minimum development. They reaffirmed this with green light one by two to one, and again with the general plan very recently, which promised them breaks on development. Then, most astoundingly, the Daily Pilot poll, very bad poll, very unprofessional, but what was astounding was, out of four hundred and fifty people, ninety-seven percent wanted a park of some sort on that site. Three percent wanted a city hall. This is a medium that has never been known to favor the park. If you add it all up, I think you know what public opinion wants, ballot or not. I know of no corresponding grassroots clamor for a brand-new city hall on that park site. Given this, and all the time that's gone before us, I think it would be welcome and honorable for at least one of the minority on this council to say enough is enough, the cost of our objections is no longer serving any purpose, costs are increasing because of our delay, fish tracks and we're out, let the park be a park. It's not too late. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Wasn't going to speak on this, but I, I have to, I have to bring things to, to the front. I think that no other, since I've lived in Newport, I have not seen any other issue split this city and become so volatile within the public. The public doesn't want a park, and maybe a segment does, but the public, the other side of the public wants a city hall. I think it's a, a foregone conclusion that we need an efficient, technologically savvy, connected-to-our-services city hall. We don't have it here, we're not going to have it here. At what expense are we going to continue to do this? You do not have enough information to make a decision tonight. You are spending money, public money, without proper, full conclusive evidence. You have to wait until you have everything thought out, until you have all, all sides thought out. Sites continue to be looked at, continue to be turned down. We have limited sites available, we have plenty of parks, used parks. If a park was there that was going to be used, there would, like Bob Henry, there would be not one objection. This site is in the middle of business and commercial, it's next to another public facility. It is centrally located within this city, and I think until you have enough information to make a full decision, you should preclude yourselves from voting on this issue. Thank you.
For the record, that was Marsha Dossi, resident of Newport Beach.
I'm not going to be too global on my comments. Ron Hendrickson, the Fort Streets, Newport Beach. I just wanted to, first, I don't think it'd be any surprise to say that I'm not in favor of moving ahead with this park, but I did want to note that I've had some concerns about the proposed parking lot. All of the drawings that I've seen show it as a simple, simple rectangular parking lot, and I think, I think aesthetically, we deserve more than that. I, I drive MacArthur probably three or four times a day coming down, and I thoroughly enjoy that view, and for whatever happens to the, the park site or city hall, I want to be sure that I enjoy and others enjoy that view for many years to come. But Mr. Curry mentioned that there's potentially twelve million dollars coming along when the four hundred and fifty apartments in the Newport Center are constructed. Well, but I think we think that's about ten years away. I think it's a very good point. So why not wait until we have that kind of money and do something right? For example, Laguna, if you're familiar with the Montage Park at the south end of the hotel, they did a wonderful little parking deck that comes out, and it's all grass on top, and you drive around, you park underneath. Why in the world couldn't we have something like that on this park, where from Avocado you could get in under a deck, the residents up there would never have to worry about seeing all these cars parked up there? And I'm concerned about seeing a parking lot as I drive down MacArthur Boulevard, and I'm absolutely sure that's what we're going to see. I think it would really be unfortunate to put that right smack in our view. I do want to comment on the previous speaker that said that the Daily Pilot survey indicated that ninety-seven percent of the people wanted a park. He's absolutely right, but the majority of those wanted a city hall in the park. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to comment from the public?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Jan Vanersluth, representing SPON. SPON has been working for over twelve years to have a park located at the site, and I think one of the major problems that has occurred with this park site is delay. And what's been happening over and over again, it's been delayed, been delayed, been delayed, and that's what the effort is tonight, is to delay it some more. Why delay it? So you could do something else with it besides having a park. And that's the real reason. But the underlying reason to delay it is so someone can put a city hall, or someone could pass an initiative to put nothing but a city hall on that park site. We may find ourselves in a position of, of not even having any kind of a park on that park site. So I think it's important to go ahead with the direction that you've been in, it's important to keep faith with the people, it's important to take the responsible action and, and go ahead and continue what you've been doing. I agree with what Mr. Curry said. When you look at the staff report, he's, they're projecting twelve million dollars to occur from the development of the residential units in Newport Center. If you wait ten years before you do anything with that site to get that twelve million dollars, then you, then there's nothing, you can't spend it on anything, not at that site anyway, that site would be gone. It's important to go ahead with the project right now, get it built, the money is coming, the money will be in the bank, and there will be more money available in the future to spend it on other parks that need attention in the city. So I would ask that you, that you not delay the project. Delay has been the big enemy of the Newport Center Park, and I think you need to go ahead with your plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak? Mr. Ford?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is John Nelson, 110, Viar Larga. Let me start by saying that I have a great deal of respect for the members of this council. You have made sound decisions in the past, and they are based on the best interest of the community. But I have to say, in this instance, some of you are on the wrong side of this issue. And I recognize that in a public forum, there is room for honest people to disagree. Unfortunately, when it comes to the issue that appears here tonight, emotion seems to trump logic. It puzzles me why this council would not consider reserving just a portion of the surplus land for a city hall. Everyone seems to be in agreement that a city hall would require a three-acre parcel. And at the current asking price of seven million dollars per acre, the cost to purchase land would add, to purchase land as an alternate site would add more than twenty million dollars to the cost of the city hall. Asking taxpayers to come up with an additional twenty million dollars just so some proponents of this passive park can have their nature walk is asking a lot of taxpayers. Sometimes situations arise where the wants of special interests must take a backseat for the greater good of the community, and I believe this instance is one of those instances. Now, it's been said, city council needs to take a long-term view, and that the city has responsibility to provide for the park needs of current and future Newport Center residents. Yes, it does, but not at the expense of unduly burdening its taxpayers. The city has a greater responsibility to the citizens to be prudent with taxpayer dollars. Spending twenty million dollars to acquire an alternate site when we already own land that fills this need doesn't seem prudent to me. It has also been said, the city council needs to live up to their commitments. This is a noble thought, and most of the time, I would agree. But the reality is that changing circumstances sometimes justifies abandoning a prior commitment. For example, in the old South, many leaders were elected to, were elected on their commitment to maintain segregation. Should those commitments have been honored? The point that I'm making is that times change, circumstances change, and that in itself justifies not being bound or locked into a prior commitment which may be adverse to the interests of the community. Now, a point has been made that this land was not free, that we have incurred substantial initial costs for acquiring this land in the form of density. This assertion is irrelevant. The cost we may have paid in the past has no bearing on the fact that we now own this land or how this land should be used. In fact, it seems to me all the more reason not to pay twice for the site. It has also been argued that, free or not, this land would be expensive to make into a buildable site. There would be issues of grading, retaining wall surface and subsurface drainage that would need to be addressed. But I believe the cost differential of these improvements, when compared with turning any other alternate site into a buildable one, will pale when compared to the twenty million dollars you're asking the taxpayers to come up with. It has also been noted that other commercial residential mixed uses have shown that parks are an important community element and are used by residents. This may be true of active parks, but I question whether it's true of passive parks. Most residents never set foot in one. That's because they're not really a park per se. Generally, they're full of scrub brush and weeds, and are not conducive for recreational purposes. Now, we've all heard the adage that beauty is in the eye of the beholder, but the problem is that the beholders are not the owners paying for their notion of beauty. With regards to the issue before you tonight, it would appear the term passive park has become a euphemism for not in my backyard. The reality is that many of these passive parks are being used as placeholders for the status quo by individuals who don't want anything built, regardless of what benefits would be derived by the community. Now, some have asserted that we need to keep our word to CIOSA, that we need a park. Otherwise, we're going to be shortchanging our future residents. Well, I believe it's better to shortchange a small number of future residents than to shortchange all of the current residents by ruling the site out. It has been arguably stated, the overriding factor is Newport Center for now and its future needs a park. It seems to me, however, there's a much greater need within the community for a new city hall than for an additional three acres of passive park. Now, all I'm suggesting is that for the time being, that three of the twelve acres be set aside in order to provide an option, a no-cost alternative site for a new, for a new city hall, until such time as another city hall site may be found. This would be a prudent measure in the event the city is unable to locate a viable alternative site. In doing so, the city can keep its options open, taxpayers won't be unduly taxed, and the proponents of the park can move ahead with a nine-acre park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Bernie Zavallstad, Mr. Mayor, Councilperson. The last gentleman has flawed philosophy. Number one is, our general plan states that if we replace three acres of a park with a building of this nature, the general plan says that you have to replace that somewhere else. So you don't get any twenty thousand, twenty million, whatever it is. You don't get that. If you don't go by the general plan, then what's happening here is because we do a charter member amendment, if it ever does happen, and it negates the general plan. Is that what we voted on in November? Is that what we're about? I don't think so. Number two is that what you're voting on tonight is very minimal. Ninety percent of the cost of these plans are already paid for, already done, over a quarter million dollars over the last three or four years. Ed, or somebody on the staff here, I'd like to know, maybe you can email me, but I'd like to know what the balance of that contract is, but it's very minimal. So you're voting on ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. This vote is not hundreds of thousands of dollars, because ninety percent of this plan is supposed to be completed, the way I understand it. So this vote is very minimal vote. Isn't like you're starting all construction plans all over again. Third point is, I'd like to have you consider in the future the fact that you quit calling this a naming rights for the entire park. When we were working on this program two years ago, we had, the staff was at every meeting, we had, you call it sponsorships, okay? That's number one. We had a hundred thousand dollar sponsorship for the circular arbor in this park. And the staff was going along with this, there's no problem. So why are we calling it naming rights? It's not naming rights, you're naming the sponsorship for a portion of this park, like we were going to do then. We were going to have naming rights for the circular arbor, we're going to have Arbor Column Plaques, and we had a whole list of things of how we were going to raise money. We would have this all done, paid for, and handled two years ago if the council would have voted by, in six months, by the end of the year, for a million two. Now it's gone from a million two to four point three million, and going up every year or every day. I don't know how it gets so high. So the point is, I think that when you do discuss this, six hundred thousand dollars for a sponsorship for the center part of this park is not out of line. And so I think in the future, you should consider that, the discussion, what you're voting on tonight, maybe Ed knows the figure, maybe the staff knows the figure, it's tens of thousands of dollars. It's not like two, three hundred thousand dollars that you've already paid for and been working on and developing for the last three or four years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Anne Balderson, I live in Old Corona del Mar. And I've been involved in the work to save this open space park for about the last eight or nine years. And the point where we are right now, I believe, is I don't know why we're still hearing things about whether or not we should build something there, because the vote has already been taken. And I just wanted to remind everyone of that, that the vote was already taken. And the vote was to save the park. And to me, this place is an absolute gem. It's not just a piece of land, it's not just a place where some grass is going to be put down. This place is a gem. This is an ecological gem, and it's, it has the potential to be a wonderful place for everyone in this area, including visitors to the area, to be able to use, and to be able to enjoy nature in a way that you can't really do when you're just in a regular park, where you're playing games or whatever you're doing. And of course, you're enjoying nature then, but this is something unique, and it has a lot of potential to be a place where children can learn more about, and families can learn more about, about nature, and, and learn how to really enjoy it and be nurtured by it. And I just think it's, it's a sad thing that we're still struggling with this question of whether or not something is going to be built when that's already been established. So I just hope that you will all save this beautiful open space. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Don't knock anything over now, Dick. Just teasing.
I wish I could guarantee that.
I wish I could.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar. I, I'd like to thank Mr. Webb for his work, I thought it was very excellent. I think where they're putting the berm of dirt will actually block a public view, and public views are to a large extent supposed to be inviolate. Private views are not supposed to be. But we have a private view plane here that we seem to be protecting unbelievably. And I just, I can't understand that. We're protecting how big MacArthur is, we're protecting private view planes? No one else has this. There's nobody else in the city that I know has this right. The other aspect of this is, is that it would be cheaper to tear up the park, like we're going to tear up part of the park, you know, because we're not putting it in exactly like we want it. It would be cheaper to tear up a million dollars of the park and put a city hall in, as should be, rather than not, rather than go somewhere else. And, and, and the budget is an item. We were told a couple weeks ago, I wasn't at the budget hearing today, so I had not yet. We were told a couple of weeks ago, I wasn't at the budget hearing today, so I'm not sure about that, but that we only had 5% of our budget that was supposed to be outlined for capital items. Well, that would put us back two years. We're considering this huge amount of money that we're going to finance things. It seems to me that money doesn't grow on trees. And we're also told, and I just received another economics report, that, that healthcare and pensions in the private system, I mean, in the public system, are run amok. And we've got that problem, too, that we're going to have to face. And, and I think we need to realize that money is not free, and, and, and we need to look at that. And certainly, this is a viable way to solve our problem, as far as this being a CIOSA site for 20 years. Yeah, it also was supposed to be old people's home. It was also supposed to be a city exchange, in traffic exchange for a freeway. I mean, this site has had multiple uses on it and proposed for it, and nobody has ever had any problems with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak from the public?
My name is Novella Hendrickson, and I live in the Port Streets. I think things started to go wrong way back, December 13th, 2005. We had a wonderful opportunity when, in November of 2005, some of you were on the council, some not, that you decided to have a citizen, two citizens committees to look at facilities and also sites, to place a city hall somewhere in the center of town. And at that time, the facilities committee came back in May of '06 with a preliminary list, which the finance committee has used at your go-away in, in March. And I'm looking here, and the parks that they had were Sunset Ridge Park, Marina Park, and those are the ones that they have on this list, at your facilities. Unfortunately, at that December 5th meeting, you took off Newport Village as a site for the city hall. And that was a motion. And following that motion, it was item number 26, you had the donor that was going to give you $1.2 million, at least all of you thought, who were sitting there, possibly, maybe somebody knew, but it appeared to us as a public that you were going to get $1.2 million. Well, that didn't happen. And I, I've been doing research about this and reading a lot of papers, and I did get this off the web, actually, 6/28/06, when I was looking about parks, trying to learn what was going on with the parks. And in this, it tells us that after the June 14th, '05 meeting, during the past several months, staff representatives with Hall, informant, and council members, Selig, had a meeting with the best, the donor, to discuss park sites itself, the concept plans, developments, the final documents, et cetera. And it seems to me, at the February 2nd, or February 27th meeting, that the donor had asked for a lot of amenities, and, and there was work with this donor. And I know you're taking that off the table for tonight, but when that, when the approval of the donor came up in, in, in that meeting of 2005, there was not an agreement that was made. And I guess at that time is when he was going from $1.2 million to $600,000. And I think that's something that a lot of people are very upset about, the naming of the whole park for that amount of money. And I want to remind everyone who's here tonight that it was never about having a city hall or a park. It's always been about having a park with the city hall, and a few acres out of all the amount is not going to do anything to the park people who are just wanting a passive park. It'll be more vibrant, and we hope that, on this motion that you have, that you will reject it, because we don't have enough information. As of today, when I went and asked for looking at plans, there's no plan. There's just these little mini graph pieces of this parking lot, and we're supposed to figure out what that is. Maybe some of you under, have a plan, but we haven't seen it. So, I would recommend that you bring a plan to, and have us look at it and discuss it, maybe at a study session, and then bring it to the full council. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else that would like to comment on this matter from the public? Okay, so you know what? I'll close the public comments section. Is there any further comments by any of the council members?
Mr. Mayor, there's been some comment here about where we are exactly in the preparation of the plans, and I don't know what the answer is, but it seemed to me like council had previously given direction to move forward with, with developing these plans, and then there was the conflict of interest issue, and, and we put a hold on spending any money. And now, this motion would come back and say, you know, move forward with final development of those plans. So, I think, I'd like to ask Steve Badham where we are with these plans, so there isn't any misunderstanding.
Thank you, Homer, Mayor, and council. Just to kind of fill you in by way of a little background, Hall and Foreman was the consultant that was selected, and back in 2004, we, we council approved a conceptual design of about Then later on, in September of 2005, they were given direction to move forward with the plans and specifications, which was $158,500. So, so far, we're at $287,450. When folks have been mentioning that the plans are 90% complete, they're both right and both wrong. And the reason being is that the 90% complete is based upon the original concept, which Hall and Foreman was charged to do, which included what we're now referring to as Phase One and Phase Two, which is the southerly part of the park, which is the library parking lot, as well as the center part of the park. Unfortunately, if we decide to move forward with just doing design of the center part of the park without doing the, without doing the library parking, we have a real problem. And that's because, as Councilman Webb mentioned, there did, there is indeed a fill being shown in the center of the park. And that's because the direction we gave to Hall and Foreman, and PBNR gave us back at the beginning, back in 2002, 2003, was that we're trying to balance the site. We're not trying to spend a lot of money exporting dirt off the site. So, the idea was to excavate the library parking lot area and put some of that dirt on the site and remove relatively few cubic yards off the site. So, without that dirt available, the plans for the middle part of the park are effectively, you know, not 90% anymore. So, we have asked Hall and Foreman to go back and look at what that would take. As Homer mentioned, we did kind of put them on hold. They did come back to us, though, and did indicate that they could give us a new proposal within a couple of weeks, and that they anticipated that the, the time to redo the plans would probably take approximately six months. So, that really leaves, you know, it's, it's a little more, it's a little more complicated than just saying the plans are almost done. They're not really almost done, unless we decide to proceed with both phases, the library parking and the center part of the park. Additionally, we'd have to ask for a proposal to come, pull together a pad area and, and a design for not only the restroom, but also the tot lot. So, that complicates things further. And we're prepared to do that if, if council decides that the direction that you want to give us tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilman Webb?
Yes, thank you. I guess that everybody up here knows that I feel that we should have the opportunity to use this site as a city hall. If I take and throw that away for right now and put my engineering hat on and say, "Well, if we were going to do a park, what should we be doing?" If we, if we were going to put a park on this site, as I mentioned in my, I'm sorry, I got so impassioned about it, I sometimes get carried away on some of these items, but we need to really take the new information that we've gotten related to adding elements to this park, such as the restroom, parking lot, and tot lot, and match that also with the thought that the consultant may be impacting public views, and ask that some sort of revised conceptual plan be put together to show how you might do a Phase One before we go ahead and hire somebody to put, spend a lot of money on putting together a set of plans that goes ahead with what is on the books today. So that, that I really do feel that the actions that we're being asked to put on, to vote on tonight are not the appropriate way to go, and I would please request the, the council that if you do decide to go forward, don't use these recommendations, but use something that would put together a conceptual plan that would be brought back to us before we spend a lot of money getting a consultant to put together a plan that is going to, I don't know, may not necessarily be the best way of doing things. For instance, if that fill were not there, it provides an excellent location for the, for a restroom to go at that site. It also allows for a better placement of the parking facility to serve the remainder of the park. So that when, when I looked at the council and asked, "Have you actually really seen the plan, the 90% plans?" I've gone through them. I've looked at them in quite a bit of detail. I'm used to reading plans, and I, I would really, if we were to put a park there, I would really question that this is the design that we really want to put on this park.
Councilman Gardner?
Mr. Webb, putting aside the fact that you want to put a city hall there, but putting on a cap that said, "Okay, if I was someone who wanted to move ahead with this," I want to keep it moving, but I want to do it as responsibly as possible, what sort of motion would you craft? Is that unfair? I don't think so.
I'm not sure I'm going to give you the words.
Actually, I think that's very fair.
Okay, well, my, my motion would be that we have the staff put together a conceptual plan that takes into consideration the comments that were made about view blockage and extra fill in that area, that most appropriately places the restroom and parking lot and tot lot on a site that would fit in with what has been considered in the past.
My second question. Mr. Selig, would you consider something like that as an alternative?
I would only, oops.
He voted yes. There's a Freudian slip there.
I, I don't have a problem with that concept, but I would want to do it in conjunction with developing the final plans. I think going to another stage of concept development plans is just more delay, and it's just dragging this thing out. We know enough about what's going on out there. If we don't want to put that fill area in, if we want to be more sensitive about where the tot lot goes or the parking lot go, we can do it in the, in the context of doing the final plan. So, I don't have a problem with the concept, but I think we're just wasting time to do it and do another concept plan, drag it out another so many months, and then we get into construction drawings. You just might as well get into the construction drawings right now. So, I would accept that kind of direction in the development of the final plans.
Councilman Gardner, anything further?
So, how would you rephrase your motion, then?
What he said, but in the context of the final plans. I didn't have a prob, I don't remember exactly what he said, but I didn't have a problem with anything he said, except that he wants to do it in the context of doing, going through another conceptual design phase of this project.
And, and Don, if we were taking these into consideration, but moving, instead of doing a concept, moving to actual drawings?
Well, let me, let me toss one thing out. We can't, I, I'm anticipating that the redesign of this project is going to be in excess of $50,000. Is that correct? Do you think?
I think it would be safe to say with the addition of the restroom and the, and the tot lot, it probably would be.
Okay. With that said, we're going to have to get a proposal from the consultant, and then his contract is going to have to come back for the city council for approval. That's going to be a month, month and a half, at least, before it comes back to us. And it would seem like to me that we could spend, oh, $10,000, $15,000, putting together a conceptual plan in that timeframe to where, while our consultant is, is going to let us know how much he's going to charge us to do a redesign, we could at least have some sort of drawing that we were looking at that would let us know what he's going to design as, design to, as opposed to what is total unknown out there today.
Okay. I'm getting really excited. I think we're really getting close to a consensus here.
I'm still going to vote no.
Oh, cute. I think that's an excellent idea, though, that we will, we will have a conceptual at the same time as we're getting back the contract for us to approve, which we will have to. Ed?
My, my, my motion stands. I mean, if someone wants to make a substitute motion, fine, but I'm going to leave my motion as it is.
All right. I would like to make a substitute motion that we add the fact that there will be a conceptual plan while we're waiting for the rest of it to come back. Do you want to turn up to, what, $10,000 to $15,000? That's, that's my motion, my substitute motion.
Well, is there a second yet? Okay, no. I'm not saying I won't second it. I have some comments as well that I'd like to make. You know, I agree with almost everything that Don has said tonight. I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. There's, there's no rush to build this park. I, I still do not understand why are we rushing to build this park when we have other, and, and I will put the city hall aside, although that is the 800-pound grill in the room. But even if we, even if we find another solution for city hall somewhere else, a better solution than even the OCTA site, which was talked about, or, you know, this park property, just looking at the park as a park. I mean, we have, and, and I'll pick up where Councilman Curry left off with, you know, the fact that, you know, we have, just talking about 450 units, $12 million for units that are going to eventually be built, and I believe that they'll be built at some point in time. And, you know, there's just too many dollars on the table for them not to be built. But I guess what I'm concerned about today is not 450 units and a potential thousand residents that will someday live in Newport Center. I'm concerned about the 80,000 residents that live in Newport Beach today. And those 80,000 residents in many areas of town are underserved by parks today. We have two parks that we've been talking about for years now, Sunset Ridge Park and Marina Park, which are going to be, in my opinion, at least Sunset Ridge Park will be an active park, which will be much more used than anything that we're going to do to this Newport Center Park property. And Marina Park, which I also believe will be heavily used because of the location, types of amenities that are going to be there, proximity to the bay, and, and other factors. So, we have two parks that staff has already said are going to cost in excess of $20 million to build these two parks. And we don't have $20 million sitting in account anywhere, all right? We, we still owe $3 million on the purchase of the Sunset Ridge property. So, my feeling is that we have millions of dollars floating around to build Newport Center Park, that we should really be steering this money towards parks where we have residents that live here today that have a demonstrated need for parks, for active parks, for parks that are going to be used. Parks that have been in planning probably, you know, almost as long as this park has been in planning. Sunset Ridge Park's been in planning for a long time, as far as I know. But regardless, you know, I think we just need to look at the, the merits, the benefits of weighing whatever, set our priorities, and, you know, I, I just don't see the logic. I mean, I could, I, I, I too, you know, I, I, I'd like to go down the path that I think Councilman Gardner is leading us, and if we want to move forward with conceptual development of this park, so that at some point in time, we'll be ready to build this park, maybe a donor will come forward that'll donate more than $600,000. And that was the goal. And that was the goal at the time, when Mr. Svolsted came here with other members of the community and asked to go out and raise funds to build the park. We said, fine, if you can identify donors that want to build this park for us, great, let's go to it, have at it. And, you know, he brought a donor, the donor had a million, too. We thought the park was going to be not much more than that. Turns out, you know, we're talking about $4 million today and a $600,000 donation, so we're way off the mark. In addition, you know, I don't know what this park's going to look like. We talk about plans being 90% complete, not being complete, phasing, not phasing, you know, what's the elevation going to be, where's the parking lot going to be, where are we going to put the bathrooms? I'd like to see a conceptual plan of what this thing's going to look like before we send it out to bid. Maybe we'll make further changes. Why have, send out something to bid that we're not happy with? Once we get the bids back, we'll start saying, well, why did we do this? And they'll have to have the bids revised. I mean, we just faced that with the trash contract up in Newport Coast, where we were apparently not satisfied with the bids, and now we're sending it back out to bid. We weren't satisfied with the process. So, you know, I will support, I guess, Councilman Gardner's motion. I'm going to kind of rephrase it a little bit, because I don't believe that we should be moving forward with construction documents or putting them out to bid. I think that if we want to move forward with, spend some more money on conceptual design of a park here, taking into account the fact that there will be phasing, and so that we can understand what does phasing mean, what are the costs associated with phasing, how much extra is it going to cost us now to phase this park as opposed to not? Apparently, there's going to be additional cost now, because we're going to have to export soil if we ever want to put the parking in in Phase Two next to the library. Is that correct, Mr. Batum? Okay, so now that's another cost that I don't even know what that is, you know? And so, and if we don't export the soil, we're going to dump it on the Phase One of the park that we've completed building. So we're going to destroy all the improvements that we spent a lot of money building. So to me, that doesn't make sense. It's not fiscally sound. That's not the way our city should be doing business. We should be supporting the residents that live here today with the park projects that will benefit, or will have the greatest benefit today for our residents. And so with that, I will make the alternative motion, since your motion didn't get a second, but hopefully you'll support my motion, that we go forward with a conceptual plan of the park, taking into account the existing amenities that are planned for the park, the amenities that the Parks Commission has identified most recently, the tot lot that Councilman Selich identified, the parking lot that I asked to be put in six months or a year ago, I don't even remember how long ago, as well as, you know, restrooms, and taking into account the phasing of the park and how that's going to affect the park development, and what is that going to mean to the cost of the park? Because I think those are things that we want to know before we send anything out to bid. Maybe we want to build Phase One and Phase Two at the same time. Maybe we'll save money that way. Maybe that's a better way to go. But, you know, we haven't talked about that. There's only been a rush to build Phase One, and for the life of me, I don't understand why. It just doesn't make sense from a fiscal standpoint, doesn't make sense from a common sense standpoint. So that's my alternative motion, is to proceed with plans for conceptual development of the entire park, not just Phase One, and just so we know what we're getting into. And if, you know, this way we'll at least have a project at some point on the shelf, ready to go. If Mr. Svolsted is lucky enough to go out and identify more money, or anybody else on his committee, or anybody else who's listening to this that wants to come in and write a check for $4 million, we'd love to have it. So with that, that's my alternative motion.
But not to move forward with anything else?
Well, I think we've eliminated two and three, so we're really talking about number four, completing construction documents for the middle section phase as soon as possible, put them out to bid, which I don't agree with, because I don't know what the thing's going to look like. I don't have a feel for what the costs are, or what the implications are of doing Phase One and not doing Phase Two and Three at the same time, or, you know, any of that. I don't think any of us do. I don't even think Councilman Webb does, even though he's gone and looked at the plans, and he is a public works director, former director and an engineer. So I think we're all shooting in the dark just to move this project forward for whatever reason. Whatever reason people who are in favor of moving it forward for, I just don't agree with those reasons, because I don't think they're sound reasons. And so that's my alternative motion.
I'll second it.
I have a question. Would this conceptual plan include a description of the phasing?
I would hope so.
Yes.
Yeah, because I think that's important, I think that's one of the big missing keys here, is that you're talking about building, you know, you're talking about building the hole in the center of the donut, and it just doesn't make sense.
I think that my $10 to $15 estimate for all of that work might be a little bit low. It might be a little bit low, so I think that, I'm just letting you know right now that...
Turn your thing on. Okay, anybody else that has a comment? Councilman Curry? See, even he voted for it. See, I'm telling you, these guys, they want to get on board.
Mr. Mayor, the answer as to why people are moving forward on this park is because there are other people in the community who are moving forward just as fast trying to build a city hall on it. I mean, let's, as we all acknowledge, that's the issue. And I respect the candor in your comments, that you believe there's other parks, and other members of council believe there's other parks that they would see as a higher priority, and they'd want to see funds expended there. And so let's recognize this for what it is. This is the contest between which parks and which neighborhoods get built first. Now, I happen to believe that we can move forward on all three of those parks on the schedule that we'll get them done. We're not even going to have the trailers off of Marina Park for another two years, but from a financial perspective, it's clearly possible to move all three of them on the same. So I don't believe that it's a choice between Sunset Ridge Park today, or Newport Center Park today, or Marina Park tomorrow. I believe we have the financial wherewithal and the capacity to move all of them simultaneously. Now, I will admit to you that I believe that this process of trying to have to do this in light of, you know, an issue that has to come before this council every couple of weeks to get voted on is not necessarily the best way to make policy and give policy direction. I think we're certainly demonstrating that to the folks today. But I think we need to respect the fact that, you know, we want to move forward on this park and get it going. And I don't think we need to make a choice between those other parks, because it's not an exclusive choice. And I do believe that the reason why we're pushing forward on this is because the choice that we're being offered is, is people are trying to write into the city charter that thou shalt for evermore and all time have city hall at this particular address, as opposed to a block away, which is where the study we're doing now currently is looking at.
Well, I'll respond to those comments just quickly. I don't agree that we have the financial wherewithal to build three parks in the next two or three years. So I don't think that we have $20 million, $30 million, or, well, $20 million at least for the Marina Park and Sunset Ridge Park, at least $3 or $4 million for this park. I mean, we haven't spent $23 million in parks in, I don't know, how many years? And that's including with Benita Canyon Park just being built and all that. That money needs to be accumulated somehow, unless we're going to go start selling bonds to finance these parks, which we may do at some point in time, but that's not on the table right now. So, you know, well, let me ask, unfortunately, none of the finance guys are here, do we have a reserve account now for parks? How much money is in our Park and Lou fund, or whatever? Just ballpark.
I don't know. We have a reserve fund for just capital improvement projects of 13 million.
Of how many?
13 million.
13 million, for all the capital improvement projects in town? And that includes city hall and fire stations, police stations?
They aren't identified.
Right, so, I mean, it's just a general fund of $13 million. I mean, it's not all earmarked for parks or anything else for that matter. Do we have an account that has Park and Lou fees in it?
I'm sure.
Dave is looking now on the...
CIP fund, are we supposed to have a certain reserve in that per council policy?
Not on the park fund. There isn't a reserve fund for that.
It's going to be a race here between Don and Dave.
Well, I can find the Park and Lou fees.
Okay, you win.
You have a fund balance recently of 1.3 million, but by the end of this year, you'll have some expenditures from it. It goes down to 395,000.
Whoa, 395,000, okay. So that's about pay for the restroom, that's going to need to go into Newport Center Park, but not take care of any of the other park issues around.
But as Homer noted, you also have that significant reserve for capital improvement.
Yeah, significant reserve for capital improvements. But we're talking about building Oasis in the next few years, is that a capital improvement project?
Yeah, that's 14 million.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, that's 14 million.
What is?
The reserve for capital improvement.
Okay, 14, I mean, I agree, we have a capital reserve account, but we're not going to be, I'm not going to vote to blow our whole capital reserve account on parks for the next few years and not build anything else in town. It just doesn't make sense. So getting back to my original statement, I think that we don't have the financial wherewithal, it's misleading, I believe, to say that we can move forward on all three parks at the same time and get them all accomplished at the same time. We have to make choices, that's what we're here to do. We have to prioritize. My priority is to service the residents that are here today, not 450 units, 1,000 residents that may be moving in someday to Newport Center, and I think that that, it doesn't, it's not prudent to spend our money, even if we did move forward on Newport Center Park first, even if we didn't have the other two parks to think about. It's the way, the manner in which we have been moving up until this point is the wrong way to go. We're putting the cart before the horse, I said it before, I'll say it again. And it's just, the only reason we're seeing this at every meeting is because we're, it's just not being done in the right manner, and it fits and starts, because it's just, it's just not right. That's what it is, it's just not right, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Selich.
Yeah, I'd like to go back and address the motion, if I may, or the substitute motion. I'm going to oppose the substitute motion. We have a concept plan. I don't think we need another concept plan. Anytime you have a concept plan, the distance between the concept plan and the construction documents, there's a lot of change, there's a lot of detail that gets filled in here. There's nothing that's been suggested here that radically changes the concept plan that was approved quite some time ago, and it's all certainly within the scope of going from a concept plan to final design documents. So I'm not going to support the motion. I think we can take those items, roll them right into the, right into the final plans. And, you know, at the end of the day, if we can't afford the restrooms, we don't have to put the restrooms in Phase One, we can have the space for them and wait till later. You don't have to have them in Phase One, so we can see what comes out of it. But in the meantime, we need to go ahead and get these construction documents done and not go back and fool around with more concept plans. It's just more mumble jumble. Let's get into and getting the final plans done here.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, first off, Councilman Rosansky, I completely disagree with your assertion that we do not have the wherewithal to pursue three parks. These parks will move along on separate timelines. By your logic, we have no money to do any of these parks. We will be able to find the funding in an appropriate way to do these parks and to also do our capital improvements plan, which after all, none of which was predicated upon having the cash in hand before we start. None of it. We are having, there will be financial sources available to us as we go forward from development fees and other sources. I've spent a great deal of time studying this budget. I think I have a very good handle on it, as well as our reserves, and I am completely confident that we will find a path to be able to pursue all three of these parks, in addition to the other things that we need to do, along the timelines that they are likely to be developed. So I'm sorry, I have to reject your assertion there. I do have a question. If we go forward with a conceptual plan, how long, if staff were to give direction tomorrow to the consultants to complete a conceptual plan, how long might it take, Steve, in your estimation, to produce a conceptual plan along the lines proposed by Mayor Rosansky in his motion? And at what rough cost? We're not going to write this number down, we just need to know some view.
Mayor, members of council, it's really tough to kind of guess, put out a number like that, because as you all know, once you put out the number, it's the number. I would suspect that, you know, I can't really speak for Hall and Foreman's, you know, engineering workload right now, but if they do have the time, I would suspect that, you know, one month's time would be enough to come up with some reasonable concept along with some estimates. I think we probably want to see, kind of get some rough idea what kind of dollars are involved, since I think that's been thrown out about tonight, and I think that would be good for us to know what the numbers were. As far as cost, I would imagine we could probably do it within the limitations that are, budget limitations that the city manager has authorization to use, so I would suspect that it would be somewhere under 50 easily, and maybe quite a bit less, but maybe a little more than what Don Webb estimated at, maybe a little less than 50, so somewhere in the middle there, maybe.
The one issue that's of concern to me that I've heard tonight is this issue of cut and fill, and export or not export of dirt. And I guess for my purposes, I would like to understand the impact of that issue in the phasing of this before we move forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just...
I would like to say one thing.
Ed, I guess I would like you to respond to that concern.
Well, let me respond to one other issue, and I don't want staff to take this the wrong way, but you're asking how long it takes? Three weeks ago, I gave the criteria for the DIMGIM contract, and it took almost three weeks just to get the criteria to the consultant to do a study that's going to probably take them two weeks to do. So, I mean, this concept plan, I guarantee you, it's not going to be done in a month. You vote on this concept plan, you will not see it in a month. I guarantee it. We've never done something like that in a month, it won't happen. Looking at the cut and fill criteria, if we're concerned about preserving the views, as Steve indicated, the criteria that was given to Hall and Foreman when they did the plans that are developed right now was to minimize the export of the dirt, and that's why they have placed additional fill there. There's still going to be export of dirt necessary for the, for the library parking lot eventually. We can very easily, in the context of what we're doing, instruct that the views be respected and that any dirt that has to come out be exported and not be placed on the site, and just make that part of the criteria right now. Very easy to do. I mean, it's not rocket science. I mean, all that we're doing, going to a concept plan, is just delaying the thing. If that's what you want to do, that's what you'll accomplish.
Well, with all, excuse me, all due respect to Councilman Hen's financial acumen, just by saying that the money will show up when we need it, you know, I just can't buy that argument.
Okay, but you know what? That's not what we're talking about right now.
Well, it is, he brought it up, and I, Councilman Gardner, I have the floor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, if we have a $3 million bill that we owe in Sunset Ridge Park now, if we have $3 million, we should be paying down that bill. We have debt, we should pay off the debt. If you don't want to pay off the debt, then we should be accumulating the money in an account to pay to build active parks or parks that will be used by the greatest number of people in our community. You know, I don't want to belabor the issue, I've said it before. Councilman Gardner?
I'm sorry for my interruption.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say, I don't know why we're talking about what we're going to do with all these different parks and how we're going to pay for them, when our motion, our alternative motion is simply whether we're going to do a conceptual plan.
I agree. Is there any further comment? Okay, we'll be voting on the alternative motion first. Please vote.
With Councilmember Hen, Selich, and Curry voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 30. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'll be brief. You asked at the last meeting, as a result of a presentation by some students from Newport Harbor High School, to come back with some ideas or options regarding styrofoam reduction or polystyrene reduction in terms of litter and waste as it ends up in our waterways. I presented to you a brief staff report involving three different levels of possible measures that might reduce the trash. I served it up without a specific recommendation, because I think each of the tiers involves a different commitment and a different obligation, and the intent today, if you are to give us any direction on this, would be to come back based on that direction with a more formal report and/or implementation steps.
Okay, does council have any questions or staff?
I did have a concern about one of the ones in Tier Two, and Tier Two is described or characterized as symbolic ideas, and through our MEALS program to seniors, there is some styrofoam being used, and it's unlikely that, you know, they would be participating as part of the, sort of the problems of the storm drain. So the problem there is, as pointed out, if you force them to no longer use the styrofoam, there's an increase in cost of the program, and then, you know, possibly less MEALS. So I'd like to exempt out the Oasis in terms of our MEALS program. And I don't know what your thoughts are, Dave, in terms of impact.
I think you're right. I doubt that...
I doubt that the use by seniors of those products ends up much in the waste stream.
I don't know, I saw a bunch of old people throwing trash at the beach. Are you sure about that? Okay, all kidding aside, it is, I think it's an important issue. I've looked at these different tiers, and although I probably am not going to, at this point, support moving forward with tier three, an outright ban in the city, I think that we can possibly let the staff go ahead and look at some of these tier one and tier two items. I mean, you know, I had a conversation with Councilman Selich about this, and I don't want to steal your thunder on it, but he, he did, you know, a lot of what winds up in the beach and in the ocean comes from our upstream friends, from, you know, whoever's up the river or up from the back bay that flows down. But it is a little difficult for us to lean on those folks when, you know, we're not willing to, you know, do our utmost, I guess, to say, hey, we, we're a leader and we want you to follow us, instead of just telling them to fix the problem and, you know, we're, we're going to ignore it in our town. So, I, you know, I am willing to entertain some of these activ, or tier one and tier two ideas that, you know, we can institute in our community. Hopefully, we can maybe sell to some of our upstream friends so that not only will we solve the problem within our community, but we'll solve it within the ocean and the bay, which I think is what our real goal is. So, those are my comments.
Yeah, I'm more in favor of going the tier one route. I'm not really in favor of all of these other bans and other things. And I, I like taking proactive approaches to actually do something. And quite frankly, the thing that's most attractive to me in tier one is to expand the city's catch basin screen program than keeping the stuff out of the waterways to begin with. And as you indicated, my observations have been that I don't see that as much of that stuff is getting into the waterway system from our city as it is from other cities, but this would be one way that we could make the statement that you're talking about, that we're taking this seriously and, and actually do something that would physically keep the stuff from going in and catching it at, at the catch basin level and not getting into all of these bans, which I, I'm just not in favor of, of, of going that route. So, I would, I would support the tier one activities, but not going much beyond that.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Councilman Curry?
Mr. Mayor, I actually...
There's a second to that.
Yeah, a second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I actually support your approach on this. I think, first of all, we want to give recognition to the students from Newport Harbor High School who brought this issue to the council's attention and who have, have brought us to this decision point today, and I want to commend their activism for being responsible for getting us to this point today where we can have this discussion about these policies. And I, and I, first of all, I agree with Councilman Selich that, you know, blocking the drainage into the bay is a very effective way and probably one of the most important things we could do, but I also think we can go beyond that to some of these tier two strategies that involve city-sponsored events and city-sponsored concessionaires on the beach, which would make a further contribution towards reducing some of the polystyrene and styrofoam that we have on the beach. So, I would support combining, along with the Councilmember Daigle's, perhaps exemption for Oasis, the, the tier two strategies along with the tier one strategies.
I appreciate your leaving the seniors out of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, hopefully, the seniors will go along voluntarily. How about that?
I also support tier two. We need to start dealing with things at the beginning. I mean, it's, it's like trying to divert the water. We need to stop the water from getting into the storm drain. Well, it, it's great. I mean, yeah, we can catch these, catch the styrofoam in, in the, in the storm drains and the catch basins and things, but why should it ever even get there? We need to get people to stop using it and changing their habits. And I think the reason it's important to have city mandated policies is not just because it helps a bit in the city, but because it sends a very important message. When personal watercraft started to be banned in some of the marine reserves, all of a sudden, the manufacturers came up with, you know, new, better, quieter machines. And I think if we say, as a city, as other cities are doing, no, we won't have styrofoam and we are going to curtail the use of it, the manufacturers, purchasers and everyone are starting to look for other products that will be, because they're going to read the writing on the wall and say, we're not going to be able to keep making this because people are getting tired of it. So, I think it's, it also helps in that way of stimulating the next generation, which will not be as destructive in terms of pollution in our beaches. So, I would support tier two, again, with the, with Councilwoman Daigle's exception.
I think I seconded Councilman Selich's, just the tier one. I mean, I was kind of starting the discussion that clearly, you know, the Oasis wouldn't be acceptable.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I guess I have a little different, more personal take on this. I think I'm the only person that actually lives at the beach, but I can tell you, every single day, I walk the beach, I run on it sometimes, I walk the strand, there are bits and pieces of styrofoam all over the place. And that's not the styrofoam that washes down the pipe. We are at the end of the pipe. We complain about that all the time. I personally think that we should show some, some level of leadership on this issue. I recognize that it won't nearly solve the problem, especially the problem in the ocean with the marine life that ingests this, but I think it's important to show leadership. And I personally would like it. So, I'm going to support tier one and tier two. I guess I'd be glad to make a deferential exception to our seniors, but, you know, I think it's a good place to start. So, I, I think, I think what we're doing here actually is just providing general guidance, and so I would only add to that, as we do come back with a staff report for tier one and tier two, I'm assuming that it will be attached with some dollar evaluation here on the cost of compliance. My view could be swayed by that. I'm assuming that tier two initiatives here will have small dollar price tags attached to it, and therefore, I like one and two.
Okay, well, just to add, you know, I am a restaurateur, and so I would normally be involved in using a lot of styrofoam products. I know, I don't know of any styrofoam products that we use in our restaurant. We seem to do fine, so I don't know that it's costing me any more or less, it's just a different type of a product. You know, styrofoam works better, I think, with hot beverages, you know, with coffee and insulator, but, you know, I, I don't think Starbucks uses any styrofoam cups, so...
Well, for example, I think McDonald's got away from the use of styrofoam largely in their restaurants all across, all across the world.
Right.
They are certainly a cost-conscious operation.
There's certainly suitable alternatives that vendors could pursue.
So, any further comment before we open it to public comment? All right, I'll open it up for public comments.
Stephanie Berger with Earth Resource Foundation, and we have our campaign against the plastic plague, which has been very successful over the last several years. And I do want to thank you again for letting the students come and listening to them. They would be here tonight, except they are studying for their finals. And I would like to say that I think that they would be very disappointed with your motions tonight. They asked you to do tier three. They provided a proposal, an actual ordinance that the city of Santa Monica has actually implemented. It's very, very successful. Malibu had, Malibu, Calabasas, and a couple other cities have also implemented it. It's not just for the city. And I do want to remind you that tier two, the Water Quality Committee actually asked you to implement this tier two throughout all the city and the special events several years ago. And I think a couple people were surprised that that wasn't actually adopted and worked on. So, I would actually ask you to look at tier three. We are here as a resource. We are working with Heal the Bay, Sierra Club, NRDC, several very large organizations to curb the plastic pollution problem. And we have all the data, we have sample ordinances. We were just in Laguna Beach last week. Their city council unanimously, they were just at this point too, wanted the staff to propose an ordinance to ban styrofoam throughout the whole city for all food and grocery stores. And they also want to look at banning the styrofoam ice chest, we all know are horrible on our beaches, and also look at styrofoam packing materials. So, if the city of Newport Beach could also step up to the plate and be a leader, it would be a lot easier to go inland, and we are working with the inland cities on adopting these same type of ordinance. I'd also like to remind you that it isn't just the downstream effects of polystyrene. There's the upstream effects of polystyrene. Styrene is a toxin. And if we're worried about the health of the seniors, we should worry about what we're serving them in. And there are many affordable alternatives to keep their food hot. One example is the foil that Gina's Pizza, many of the restaurants use, that can keep their food probably hotter than the styrofoam and not create toxins that are leaching into their food. Also, styrofoam is not recyclable. And if you look at the ordinance, it's not really about banning polystyrene. It is about practicing the three Rs that all of us want us to teach our children, and yet we do not practice. So, it's about reduce, reuse, and recycle. It's about using materials that are, number one, recyclable or compostable, and more importantly, made from recyclable materials. As we all know, it doesn't do us any good to recycle materials if we're not buying materials made from recycled. So, I would just strongly encourage you, we're here as a resource. I have tons and tons of materials to give you. That doesn't have to take up any of staff time to show how much money can be saved and how effective these ordinances are. And many of the businesses, as you said, have already moved towards this. Wahoo's, who is very price conscious and has wonderful food, has actually shifted away from styrofoam. So, I think with a little encouragement and leadership, and Councilman Hen, I do agree with you, many of our businesses right down here on the peninsula use styrofoam, and that's where the styrofoam's coming from. So, as much of it's coming upstream, it's also here in our local city. So, I just encourage you. And I would, on tier one, if we could please strongly enforce the littering law. Catch basins are only a Band-Aid, and they will never solve our problem. They do not teach personal responsibility and will always be, we, the people that do not pollute, will always be paying for polluters. These same students came last year and did a study on how much money you can make from the littering tickets as you're doing with parking tickets, and you could actually establish a whole nother police force with the money that you can make off your littering tickets and solve many of the problems. So, with that, I will be quiet, and I ask you to really step up to the plate, be a leadership. It's already been proven it's working. Your other coastal cities are looking at this. I just was with San Clemente the other day. They're also looking at this. It's like the smoke, smoke-free beaches. So, I don't want to be here another year from now or another six months from now asking you to do this and step up to the next level. So, let's be aggressive, let's be a leader, and let's make this work. And let's support our students that did so much work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Anybody else that wants to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring you back to council for a vote or a motion.
Well, I already made a motion, but I can...
Make an alternative motion.
I can, I can count, so...
Change your motion. Good.
I do know how to count. So, I'll, I'll amend my motion to consider tier one and tier two level methods.
Except for the seniors.
You know, Celeste says that she can do it. I don't know why we're, we're even accepting Oasis. Why shouldn't Oasis be a model facility, just like any other facility?
That's kind of my question, why would we accept it?
Because, why? Because the, how is it that they're creating litter, you know, this impact to the beaches? You know, they're not throwing in the storm, the storm drain.
How do you know they're not?
So, okay, so, so, okay, so we got that far. And then the second piece of it is that there would be an additional cost if we no longer use styrofoam, and that additional cost, it's, that means less meals.
I, I think there is another issue...
The lady that just testified, testified to the opposite, that it's, there's other methods that are, she's saying that they're more effective and more cost efficient, so, to keep things hot. So, I, I don't get it.
We could certainly look into that as a part of our response. If you want to leave that issue open, it's, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like to leave it open, and let's see what the cost difference really is.
I think that the issue is meals on wheels from South County is, brings in the meals for our seniors, and they also do meals for a number of other cities in the county. So, if we say you can't use, you know, this type of product here, are they going to make a change for us, possibly? Are they going to make a change for everybody that they serve? That's what we really need to look at and talk to them about.
Well, you know, a number of these events involve bringing probably vendors in from out of the city for one reason or another. I mean, anybody who caters at the Corona Del Mar 5K, the Orange County Marathon, might use styrofoam or might not. I mean, we're just saying, you know, you can't do that here.
All right, and, and Mr. Mayor, I think one of the issues is not that they, somebody might throw it on the beach. A lot of people dispose of this properly, but we're trying to reduce our waste stream. So, by using, as Stephanie said, by using something that can be recycled, we improve that.
Well, it's an important component, certainly, and, and, you know, just be, not all trash winds up in the trash can, and it's not that far from Oasis or anywhere else in the city to the ocean. And so, things blow, you know, you get a windy day, and it all winds up down at the beach or into the storm drain or wherever. So, I, I just think it's too early to take Oasis off the table. Why don't we just study it? Certainly, if it looks like there's some huge cost differential that's going to impact programs, then we can address that at the time when staff comes back with their results of their...
That works for me. That's part of my motion.
Okay, well, I'll second your motion. How about that?
Is that the third motion?
No, I just, I amended my original motion.
So, so, we're really voting on Councilman Curry's motion unless, of course, you want to change it?
I offered a motion. I think, I offered it. Councilman Selich has moved this one on the floor.
My motion is on the floor to do tier one and tier two.
Do you want to second it?
And, and we leave the Oasis issue and the senior issue open and see what staff comes back with.
Yeah, I'll second it unless you want to. I'll give you the option.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm pushing red and green instead of the mic. That's fine.
Quit pushing those buttons over there.
We're all, we're all doing that tonight.
Button happy. Okay, so we have a motion, and somebody seconded it. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, last item here on our agenda. Award of a concession at Corona Del Mar State Beach. Dave, do you have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This last item for you tonight is, it's kind of taken a long road to get here, as is described in the staff report. This is the second time we've gone through an RFP process associated with the concession at Corona Del Mar State Beach. It's a new facility out there. Previously, the two concession spots were combined into one, which sits in the new lifeguard tower, right below the lifeguard tower. This second time, we received one bid, and it's from Rudy's Pub and Grill. The bid is summarized in your staff report. At the same time that you're hearing this, about 10 days, actually a week ago, I sent out a letter to everybody that we had residence, residential information on who lived on Breakers and Ocean, to let them know that this was a different concept than they may be used to. And I did get, we sent out about 102 letters. I got about 22, 23 different responses. And I summarized those responses briefly. We had about three or four people who were very excited about it, thought it was a great idea, about 10 who thought that they liked the restaurant concept, but they prefer that no alcohol be served, and about 10, including the Breakers Drive HOA folks who were concerned about the proposal enough to oppose it and suggested that it remain its snack bar concept. So, I bring that, this to you today, tonight, with a couple of different options. You could select a concessionaire tonight at being Rudy's, or you could decide, based on your own thoughts and some of the community impact, that we need to try this again for a third time. I will say that we have had, because of the attention given this specific project, we've had more interest from folks who weren't aware of either RFP and who have expressed an interest in competing in a third one. However, I don't want in any way to negate the fact that Todd Carson, who is here in the audience with Rudy's, went through the process correctly, submitted a, a proper bid, and it's here before you tonight.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anybody on council that wants to comment on this?
Yes, I do, please.
Go ahead.
I have, I got, because it's my district, several calls, and the calls were very long calls, very impassioned calls. And I would say that certainly the people that talked to me were not in favor of this. I think the big issue, there were two main issues. One was the alcohol. And I, I think the concept was to look down at the Beach Comer in Crystal Cove and say, you know, that's just been such a success and what a wonderful idea, and let's duplicate it. And I, I think that we have a very different audience at our, our beach in, in Big Corona than that probably goes down to, to visit the Beach Comer, so. So I think that I would be very concerned about this serving of alcohol on the beach. And I'm also concerned about the hours. I think that going till 10, I think the neighbors do have a reason to be concerned that we would probably have to cut it off about an hour before the beach closed, because we have had so many problems. I mean, we just got through the whole issue of people being on the beach after hours and everything, and then we have extra police, and we have cameras and the gate and everything trying to prevent this. So that would be an issue, and the hours, serving breakfast, great, but I, again, by saying, oh, you can serve breakfast at 6:00 when the beach opens, well, you've got staff coming down and everything. So again, you're going to have an impact to the neighbors before even the beach would open. So I think we need to look at the hours and make them a bit different. So those would be the main things. The idea of a restaurant, of something a little more upscale than we have had there in the past, was something that I had discussed with you before, and I thought it was a nice idea. But I think the time to really, to make a big change probably would have been before we built the building, because we built it in terms of thinking of what we had in the past, which was a snack bar. And so we have no internal space for this. And so I'm also a little concerned about how we would make this into more of a restaurant by only using the outside space. It doesn't mean it couldn't be done, but I would have to hear how, what the concession is thinking. So those are my concerns.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I just would like to say I will not vote for the sale of alcohol at that location under any scenario. But with regard to the bid process here, I would like a little more information from staff. What happened with Kilmer Enterprises, who was there forever? Why was it that we couldn't arrive at an understanding with them when they were originally selected?
Can I address that now, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like?
Sure, go ahead.
Actually, I believe the Kilmers are in the audience. We brought the response to the first RFP to council, and I made the mistake of bringing to you a term sheet rather than an actual contract, and I've since learned from that mistake. Because during the discussions over building the turn sheet, term sheep, term, turn sheet, sorry, I'll just keep going, into a contract, a number of issues were raised, including by our revenue department and by the Kilmers, that to me, including a very detailed audit provision, Mr. Hen, that we thought was very important with a relatively cash-based business, and the concessionaire, and some proposed alternatives that weren't acceptable to us. So what I said was, if we're changing the deal now, I would like to let the other people, the other four firms, or the three firms that proposed in that initial RFP, to look at the deal and to have another shot at it if we're giving the Kilmers another shot at it. So what I said was, I'd like to open a new RFP, a second one, and I encourage them to compete again. They decided not to submit an application, and only Rudy's did.
Councilman Curry?
Dave, can I ask, or maybe the chief client knows in the audience, what are the hours of the new gate that we just installed on the parking lot? When is it open, when is it closed?
6:00 in the morning, 10:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, so presumably, people who would be at the restaurant, who would drive, would have to be either not there before 6:00, and will have to be gone by 10:00, because we're going to lock the gate. Okay, well, that obviously would be a condition on any operation at that facility. And I would just add that I, along with Councilmember Hen and Councilmember Gardner, would not support the sale of alcohol on the beach under any circumstances.
Yeah, I too have reservations about sale of alcohol. And as far as the operation that's proposed here, I would like to thank the applicant, Rudy's, and Mr. Carson, for putting together your proposal. I'm sure you spent a lot of time and effort in doing so. But, you know, I guess my idea of a concession on the beach is a snack bar. You know, you walk up, you get hamburgers, hot dogs, french fries, ice cream, cotton candy, whatever, and you walk away, back to your beach chair. You know, I saw the proposal here where we're going to basically, it looks like to me, fence off a good chunk of the beach, at least equal in square footage to what they're paying rent on, as well as a beach seating area, which I'm not exactly sure what that is. But, you know, we're substantially impacting the public areas here, and basically creating a restaurant on the beach, not, no longer a concession. I mean, I can understand if you want to put a picnic table out there or two, and so people can have a place to eat their hamburger, you know, that maybe is not on the beach, is just visiting the beach. That'd be one thing. But if we are going to go down the road of creating a restaurant, I think that there would be a number of people, if they knew that that was the proposal, or that was what was going to be permitted there, as opposed to just running a concession stand, who would be interested in that type of an operation, because it's much more lucrative. I mean, you could open a steakhouse down here, based upon Arly. Well, seriously, I mean, you're laughing, but it's true. And I'd love to go down and eat a steak on Big Corona Beach, you know, and watch the sunset. And that's, excuse me, sir, I'm speaking. Thank you. And that is a much more lucrative operation, and we have many more people, I think, interested in making proposals to lease our facility if that was the case. So with that saying, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt our recommendation number three, to direct staff to reject all the bids and prepare, and issue a new request for proposals, taking into account a number, you know, all the considerations that were expressed here by other council members with regard to liquor and hours, and give a little bit more consideration. And I'd also like to see that the contract, before it comes to us, go to the finance committee for vetting there as far as the terms of the contract and things like that, because, you know, as we found out in the past, we are not good negotiators here at the dais, and I don't like to negotiate that way. I think we made that mistake with, maybe with the Ware contract. And, you know, I'd like it to see it go to finance before it comes to us with their review and recommendations.
I'd like to second that, but I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
I agree pretty much with what you said. I feel this should be a snack bar. I think that when we take and try to force a more advanced restaurant-type use on this area, the clientele that is down there already isn't really interested in that. They're interested in the fast food aspect. And as example, there used to be on the end of the Newport Pier, a really great bait shack and hot dog stand. In our infinite wisdom, we said, oh, we need a fine restaurant out at the end. That fine restaurant has never, ever been successful. If you had hot, I mean, look at Rudy's on the other pier. That's the type of use.
I think it's Ruby's, not Rudy's.
Ruby's, not Rudy's, excuse me, Ruby's on the other pier.
Close, yeah.
That's the type of facility that really should be on the Newport Pier. And I don't see that a restaurant facility is the type of thing that would best serve the beach users in this area. So that's
Well, certainly, you know, I would take that into consideration when you go back and look at your request for proposals, and maybe, I don't know, you need further advice from council as to where you want to go with the actual type of use there, you know, or whether it's concession, or a restaurant, or somewhere in between. But I do think we, at least at this point, need to, you know, go with item number three, recommendation number three. So you seconded the motion? Okay, I'm going to open up for public comment.
I see it's getting late here. My name is Gordon Kilmer, and I'm from the Port Streets, and I happen to have been your concessionaire for the last 30 years. I would just like to say with regard to the assistant city manager, that was inaccurate. I was not invited to make another bid on this second go around. I didn't know it even happened. Anyway, there are some inconsistencies, but I'd like to just point out that the beer and wine, I think you put that to rest. That would be counterproductive to the interests of the residents of the city, and I guess I don't have to do that. I would like to say that the current offer, well, I don't even have to say that either. I don't think it's competitive. I don't, I think it's out of order, and I don't think it was one of the original group of offers that Mr. Kiff had. Also, Kilmer has produced $100,000 rent to the city without any alcohol in its last complete year of operation. So I don't know what the problem is. Furthermore, Kilmer Enterprises has a total of 102 years' experience operating beach concessions, when you consider the six we've operated for the various years over the years. And you have before you the best offer, and the most responsible offer for the city. And I have no idea why staff has not followed through with the contract the council has directed it to make with Kilmer Enterprises on the 26th, I believe, or 28th of March of last year. It's been Dennis O'Neill, a very recognized attorney and very respected man, has tried to help me with this, and it's been very difficult. We just don't understand. And as far as outside audit, let me just tell you about that. We were working with this contract with the city. We were nine months into it. We couldn't get anywhere with it. It was just delayed and delayed. The assistant city manager said, well, yeah, we have pigeonholed that quite a bit. I've been delaying on it a lot, for no particular reason. So Dennis and I can't figure out what the problem is, but they keep stalling. So anyway, I just don't get it. I don't think that they have followed through with the contract as the council. I was ready to sign the contract. In fact, I'm used to a bidding procedure where I give the best offer upfront, and then we make the contract I bid on, and we sign it, and it's done. But this idea of a request for proposals is very dangerous, because they keep moving what they want. And CPI came up, which I never heard of. So my minimum rent was $75,000, a lot of money, and they wanted to add a CPI to that, which wasn't proper, because that was part of my bid format, to have a large amount upfront, and then it would get easier to meet as we went on. Anyway, one of the problems is I've got a lot of experience with it, staff doesn't, and they're behind me on the curve, that's all. But other than that, I'm very respectful. I just think they need to, you know, try to work with me a little more. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to comment on this matter?
Hi, I'm Amber Nickerson. My husband, John, we live in the Flower Streets. And we submitted a proposal past the expired date for the second RFP, for a breakfast cafe and concession, and also retail and rental for the Big Corona Estate Beach. We are so disappointed that we didn't know about the RFP the second time. We actually missed it the first time. This is our lifelong dream. We've been in this business our entire adult life. We did submit a proposal to Dave and to you as well, Mr. Mayor. And I would just love the opportunity for everybody to at least read it and look at it. We agree about the alcohol, and certainly the styrofoam, and we also feel that it would be such a wonderful amenity to our community to do both, to do the concession, certainly to accommodate the beachcombers during the peak season, spring break to Labor Day, of course, with hot dogs and hamburgers and those items, but also during the off-season to accommodate the village and our community with something a little bit more quaint, a little bit different for our community. Just a breakfast cafe, a coffee house and breakfast, very simple, no alcohol, very, very working operation, actually. We've already drawn plans and the proposal as to how it would actually fit in the 1,050 square feet, the concession as well as the cafe together. We feel that in our 30-page proposal, it's all written there, exactly what we would love, and just the opportunity for you all to read it and look over it, we would appreciate it. Definitely for the next round, if we need to submit for the third RFP, or however it goes, we would just like to be notified. That's all.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, you hit it all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Frank Peters. I'm the vice president and treasurer of the Breakers Drive Home Owners Association. And I have to say, I've been sitting here all night, I feel tremendous relief at this point in time. Thank you for your sensitive consideration to the consumption of alcohol. It's just that issue, when it came up so recently, it just put me into total despair. So I'm looking forward to a much better day tomorrow. Of course, as you all know, it's a family-oriented beach. We have the breakwater there that shelters, the big waves, that attracts mothers with young children. It doesn't attract the kind of people that perhaps are more rambunctious. We have other beaches, the other side of town, where you could get a drink and go to the beach, and we think, I would appreciate the council keeping the character and nature of Big Corona the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'll try one more time, Steve. And I'd really like to thank you, the same way that everyone else has. I do not think liquor is a good idea down there. We just spent $90,000 for camera system to try and get safety, and it's hard to clear somebody if you're open till 10:00 and just serve the guy. You can't move him out, so it takes an hour at most restaurants. So you're, everything you're saying comes, makes straight. The one thing that I might suggest is, if we're looking at Mr. Kilmer, maybe he's got too high a gross, you know, where he's putting 45% of his gross to the city. Maybe a little bit less on the gross would allow the pricing to be a little more moderate, and you would have more goodies go out. Now, that's going to mess up the beach a little bit. On the other hand, it might improve your, it might improve things as far as people being able to buy there, because if you got that big a gross, you got it awful lot of cost. And you certainly know that, Steve, so.
Yeah, personally, I don't know how a man was paying 45% of his gross receipts for rent, because if I had to do that in my business, I'd be coming out of my pocket for about 35% of it.
And I, the other thing I question is, is maybe we should have talked to any vendor that would have gone in there a little bit ahead of time, because I think we've made it a little harder to put in the necessary appurtenances. Apparently, we've concreted the floor, and it's kind of tough to put all the pipes under the floor if it's already been concreted. We've also, no bathroom, and a bathroom, I guess, is needed. My question is, did we put a bathroom in for the coast guard, I mean, for the lifeguards? I, there wasn't one there initially. Can you answer that, Dave? Do you know?
Mr. Nichols, actually, I don't know where the bathroom is for the lifeguards, whether it's in the building or out. The Health Department regulation is if you have more than four employees, you need a bathroom. Arguably, you could operate this concession with less than four. However, depending on, it depends on the scope of the proposal. If you have a more active concession, you will put in four or more employees and then require a bathroom. I think that's the confusion that we ran into with the previous proposals.
Well, I just would encourage maybe a little more talking with him, because he seems to have done a pretty good job and satisfied a very tough clientele. I mean, from the people that live there and so forth, and I, I'm, I'm in his camp right now. I'm not against anyone else being able to take a look at this time, but I, I do think he's done a pretty good job. And I would thank you for all your considerations.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Dolores Harding. I live in Newport Beach. I'm also very happy to understand that you will not allow alcohol at the beach. I don't even understand why it was even a consideration, why people had to call me and tell me, why are they doing that? I said, I don't know, but I'll go down. So this was the item that I really came down for. And I guess I got a problem, because this was a $3 million project, it's a $6 million project, and, and if I remember correctly, and I guess I could look it up, we didn't even have bathrooms for the lifeguards. We had to put those after the fact, and we don't have a bathroom in this restroom, and I don't understand why the city, I mean, it's just another snafu, but
Well, Dolores, being, having built restaurants before, typically, when you get new space, it's just four walls, and you put in your bathroom where you think it's going to fit best as far as your operation goes. I mean, I, we, actually, the bathroom that the landlord built in our restaurant is now our office, and we had to build two other bathrooms for the employees because it didn't fit with our design. So sometimes it's better to just not put it in and let the tenant do it, and they cut up the floors wherever they want, to put their counters and sinks and
It just seems strange that we didn't have bathrooms for the lifeguard either, okay?
That's a whole nother issue that's not before us to make.
I know, I know that. So in the meantime, anyone that wants to bid this has to put in the bathroom also and cut out the floors for all the drains and everything.
They have to make their own tenant improvements, correct?
Okay.
Which is typical.
Okay, all right. No, and, yeah, that's fine. It's just taking a long time, okay? It just
I agree.
Okay?
Unfortunately, the contractor did not perform as we expected, and the building wasn't ready in time.
And it, yeah, and it was $3 million more. I mean, I've been here for ten years.
It's another issue.
I know. There are all other issues, but in the meantime, there seems to be a pattern of how we're doing things lately. So I'm glad that we're getting a conceptual plan anyway on, on the other item, because this is just another item that follows the other item that follows the other item, okay? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dolores. Well, it's a popular issue tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Ron Hendrickson. I wasn't intending to speak on this, but I just wanted to note that I certainly want to give you another kudo on this alcohol thing. When I saw that in the, the stuff attached to the staff report, I couldn't believe my eyes. But I also wanted to say, I'm familiar with the Kilmer operation. Our kids worked there when they were in high school, their friends worked there. There is no better operation, the Kilmer operation, it was a wonderful operation, and I just hope you give them another chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would be Todd Carson of Rudy's Pub and Grill.
Good evening, Mr. Carson.
And just to clarify the record, liquor is, was only on there purely to meet the needs of the rent that was required or that was asked of us to try and get to that dollar amount. We have two proposals on the table. One of them does not have liquor at all.
Sir, just address us.
As a matter of fact, we also, we also said when we first originally came in, that is what we were gonna go underneath those premises of no liquor being served whatsoever, or beer and wine, but trying to meet the needs of financing, of the improvements for the kitchen, improvements for the bathroom, as well as, you know, we talked about, you know, possible seating and stuff outside, but mainly, obviously, the kitchen improvements as well as the bathroom. And the rents that they wanted, as you well know, Mr. Rosansky, Mayor Rosansky, you run a restaurant, 45% gross, and we were choking on it ourselves. We're like, how do we make this work? And so that was one thing we came up with. That's not what we originally intended when we first went down there, and that's why it reads the way it does. There's two proposals in front of you, and we don't need the liquor to be in there. Simple, simple enough. We did meet the requirements. We do want to do breakfast. A lot of the issues that were brought up as far as timeframes, deliveries going on, we don't need to have deliveries at 6:00 in the morning. We don't need people there at 6:00 in the morning. I think that we've been working with Mr. Kiff, telling them that we're flexible as far as what we want to do. We want to make it work for that community, too. And going down there and studying kind of the demographics and what's going on, what's going on in the middle of the week, what's going on in the weekends, we, we want to be able to provide them, the community there, something with that they can go ahead and make it a part of their own. Exactly what it sounds like another group is looking to do, that's what our proposal is on the table right now, so that people can go down there and enjoy their beach. It does not have to have alcohol, and that's, I just want to clarify that. That was, the only reason why that came up was to meet the rent at a higher level. We also said we would go down at a more manageable level, which is even at $4 a foot on space that doesn't even have outdoor seating, that's only your kitchen area, which in my mind is still excessive, but we felt we can make it work. We'd have to be a little creative as far as tables being set up, serving hamburgers and hot dogs outside, that's exactly what we were talking about doing. The reason for the glass wall or partitioning off was for the case of the ABC, if we had to go that route. So that was part of that reason. Being able to go ahead and section off and have service, though, for people coming wanting a hot dog and hamburger, soft drink, to have their section, to have a seating table, that's all we were looking to do there, too. As well as, I think it will address some of the issues as far as containing some of the trash, as opposed to people leaving, taking that trash away, using them as, or counting on them to go ahead and throw it away, you count on us now. You count on us confining and controlling a certain areas, which we want to do. We want to control an area to make it a nice area for people to come down to the beach and enjoy. I, you know, I heard everybody all night long talk about issues as far as, you know, what they've had to deal with at that beach, and those aren't our issues. I mean, I feel sorry for, you know, what's gone on for those people before, and like I said, we're here to try and give them something back that would make them feel like that's their beach again. Something that they can enjoy, that's not just a snack shop, because I guarantee those people that are sitting up on the hillside right up there, they feel like that's part of their beach, that's part of their community. But they're not gonna go down there to buy a Snickers bar. And we offer the concession stand also in our proposal, which I also want to clarify. It's not just the restaurant. We will set up one side as far as concessions, and the other side would be more of a sit-down, come over, relax, have breakfast, have lunch. If people that are at the beach that day want to have lunch that day in a sit-down atmosphere, great, you know, if they don't bring their stuff, that's fine. If not, they just want to go get a popsicle, the other side is doing the concession stand portion of it. So we're actually offering both, both venues for those people down there, and for the people at the beach and for the people that are in that community. I, I think that's, kind of sums it all up, but if you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any of them.
Anybody, staff or council, have questions? Thank you, sir.
Actually, I do. What'd you do to your leg?
That's the hottest thing, now, lacrosse.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Dr. Larson. I live on Breakers Drive. I've lived there 38 years. I frankly, I enjoy my ocean, I enjoy my view, the distant views and all that go on. But I do like to get eight hours of sleep a night, and that is why I am very concerned about clearing of the beach at 10:00 and not opening it up before 6:00. It's a residential area. It is basically surrounded by homes. The nearest commercial operation other than the beach is two blocks away. So we really appreciate the fact that you put thumbs down on the alcohol, because quite honestly, to get somebody that's been drinking off the beach is very difficult for the police, and that's our problem right now. I hope that you consider the fact that it is a residential area when you give a concession out and try to get us eight hours of sleep. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I know you don't want us to hear more speaker. I'll promise to be very quick.
That'd be nice.
Thank you. My name is Dan Hanson. I also live at Corner Del Mar Beach, and we are relieved about the alcohol issue, and I, I would echo what Dr. Larson said as well when it comes to existing there with the lighting and the traffic. You accept some of that, obviously, where you are in a public facility, but if they build a dinner house there of some kind, or even a breakfast facility as opposed to a concession, you know, I personally recognize it's gonna be even more difficult for us to manage. So I, I know the council will take that into consideration. I appreciate Nancy, your comments, and Michael as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, so you know what? I'll close the public comments. Dave, I just have a quick question as far as process going forward, because we, we do want to be fair, but we do want to get a, a good operator and an operator that we can all agree on, and a, and a type of operation. When you anticipate, or in your anticipation in sending out a new RFP or preparing a new RFP, and let's say we get four bids back, and some of them, you know, the rents differ, I mean, maybe the, the type of operation differs, I mean, what is the criteria that we're gonna use to make a decision? Or are you just gonna bring all the bids here, or are you gonna...
Well, it, it, Mr. Rosansky, as you were discussing this, and I, I think I might have a couple of ideas to bring, to improve this process a little bit, rather than having all seven of you kind of design what you'd like to see there in advance of an RFP, possibly maybe you could designate Councilmember Gardner, because it's in her district, to work with staff based on what she's heard tonight and the emails that we've seen, to refine, recommend, propose a specific recommended concept in the RFP with the understanding that people could propose something different if they really thought it was an exciting proposal. And then, as you suggest, Mr. Mayor, to route that through the Finance Committee for further advice and refinement of the contract, then I think we'd have a little bit better process than we've had in the past, and certainly advertising it better, although I will take a quick issue with this, this second RFP. It was advertised and put up on the web, and we did inform all the people that submitted the first time that they're welcome to resubmit.
Okay, I'd suggest contacting the Restaurant Association, too, and letting them get us to their people that way. Just as a point of order, can we add that into this motion here? If I did want to kind of, or should it just be done informally, that Councilwoman Gardner would advise staff on the elements of the RFP?
You can do it informally or as part of your, of your motion.
Okay, so we're not exceeding the agenda item, though, I guess is my question. Okay, well, I've made a motion, it's been seconded. If you'd like, I'll add to the motion that if Councilwoman Gardner assents, that she'd be involved in the process of the preparation of the RFP. I think I'm gonna add myself in that process, too, because out of everybody here, I'm probably the only one with restaurant experience, and hopefully I can save you some headaches.
Good question.
Yes?
Really, there's two items. One is, in your agreement, you talk about parking for employees, and I'm a little bit uneasy about how loose it is. It says, "Depending on availability, the city shall provide up to four free parking spaces for tenants' employees. There shall be no designated tenant parking. It shall be the tenant's responsibility to notify employees as to location of available parking. Tenant shall cause its employees to comply with procedures of the city." Normally, we aren't that loose. We have, if we're not allowing them to park there at the lot, the tenant has to provide parking place, specific spaces. Otherwise, their employees are gonna park up on Ocean Boulevard.
Which is what happened in the past. I think it's a good idea to take a look at that. We've never had our arms around that thoroughly, because I think there are different scenarios when, nine months of the year, when that beach isn't busy, there's plenty of parking. The key warm weekends and holidays is when you, we have to provide for ancillary parking, and I think, I think we have some ideas on that.
Should we also perhaps limit the hours of the restaurant from 7:00 to 9:00, as opposed to the entire time that the, the beach is open, to allow them to come in after the beach opens and pack up and leave before the beach closes?
I'm sorry, limit it from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
You'd probably want their, them to not allow their employees to arrive for at least, well, at least, I guess they could arrive at 6:00, I don't know what the problem, but certainly, there's a close-down time. I know in my restaurant, even once the doors close, I have employees there, they're always there for half hour, an hour cleaning up and doing whatever is done, and so if they're gonna get out of the gate by 10:00, they would, you'd have to close your business by 9:00 to accomplish that. So certainly, we need to take that into account in preparation of the new RFP, so that we're not making exceptions for the employees or, or even customers. I mean, you know, if someone sits down to eat a meal...
Yeah, you could have a last seating time.
You know, 8:50, not getting up at 9:00 o'clock, or, or, I'm sorry, 9:50, is not getting up at 10:00 to leave. I mean, they're gonna be there for an hour or so. Even hours as to, you know, last call or whatever, I don't wanna call it last call because we said no beer and wine, but, you know, last, you know, seating or whatever, seating times, or things like that.
To Mr. Carson's credit, he was very willing to look at that, because we had those discussions with him to go back to like an 8:30 maximum seating time, but your point's well taken.
Thank you.
Don't mind the extra work at the Finance Committee, so long as Councilman Curry and Henner are okay with it, but Finance Committee did use to just meet once a year, like every other...
Actually, Leslie, why do you think I took myself off the Finance Committee and made you the chair?
Actually, I have a thought.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Actually, I have the same thought, Councilwoman Dale. I, I would be perfectly happy for Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Rosansky to consider the contract issues and not put that on the Finance Committee's agenda. I know Steve has a great deal of restaurant experience, probably seen contracts before. I'm also not concerned about prescribing the hours that they can be open. As Steve pointed out, the operator will self-regulate that. If they've gotta be out of there by 10:00, they're gonna close their restaurant sometime before 10:00, and everybody will be out of there. So I, I'm not concerned about that. So I'm supportive of the motion with those caveats, and would prefer not to have it go to the Finance Committee.
Guys are shirkers.
We got...
It's, I mean, I'll leave it to the pleasure of the council.
Benchmark study, finance facilities, oil, gas.
I just thought it would be a good idea, since we have these great minds in the Finance Committee to, to look at that. But I, maybe, maybe we're substituting for the Finance Committee with Councilwoman Gardner or myself, who probably can handle it. So I will, I will inject that into my motion.
Not, not to diminish the importance of your work on this issue, we do have bigger fish to fry with the Finance Committee.
At least you put it in a food context. Are you gonna serve fried fish there? Is that your... Okay, so we have a motion. I believe we have a second. Any further comment? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Before we adjourn our meeting, I would like to adjourn our meeting in honor of two people who recently passed away. The first is a woman. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, now to order. First, I'm gonna entertain any motions for reconsideration. Councilmembers have any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, move along to adjournment in the honor, first of a woman, Rose Marie Hawkins, who is the mother of one of our planning commissioners, Robert Hawkins, Bob Hawkins. Rose Marie recently lived in Chula Vista, died on May 25th, 2007, at the age of 82. She was born in San Francisco on August 17th, 1924, and she married Ken Hawkins, and they were married for nearly 32 years before he died in 1978. She was a dedicated civil servant and a loving mother. She worked for the War Price and Rationing Board. She would have been a good person to know back then, I bet. You could have gotten a few extra ration stamps, I bet. And after a hiatus of nearly two decades to raise her children, she resumed her career at the Naval Public Works Center in San Diego, where her work was widely praised. She'll be, she was loved dearly, and she will be missed. Our second person who passed away recently in the last few days was well-known around town, and that was Marion Halfacre, who's the founder and owner of Traditional Jewellers of Fashion Island. He died this weekend of a heart condition. He was 58 years old. Mr. Halfacre and his wife, Lula, were well-respected members of the business community, and they stayed consistently involved in a number of local charities. I know that Marion was a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and more particularly, the Commodores. I think last Friday, day before he died, I think, he was, he was named Commodore of the Year, and he was also presided as the first, over his first meeting, as skipper of the Commodores. Him and his wife sponsored a number of local charities. I know they were very generous with their funds and their time to all different charities throughout Newport Beach, most particularly the Boat Parade Awards Dinner and other events put on by the Commodores. They were always, I always saw them there at those different events. Mr. Halfacre was elected to the Jewelers of America Board of Directors by more than 10,000 members of the Jewelers of America nationwide, and he served as president of the California Jewelers Association while remaining an active member of the business community of the jewelry, jewelry industry. And with that, I will adjourn unless anybody else would like to say a few nice words about Mr. Halfacre. Okay, seeing none? Thank you, and we'll see you on...